All right, everyone, so we're gonna get started. So, welcome to the Huffington Board, Huffington School Board, excuse me, meeting for Thursday, April 16th, 2020. So, we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and actually, I'm gonna stop sharing this, because I thought ahead, which usually doesn't happen, and I have... Oh, man, maybe I don't have it.
Oh, I forgot the flag this time, didn't I?
No, but I thought I had one, hold on, I think I do have one.
You can go back to the last folder, sorry about that.
No, it's quite right. Look at that, all right, so we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Nice job!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. All right, thank you all, so I'm having... All right, well, thank you, everyone, this is our, we're trying another new format today, so thank you for bearing with us, everybody. So, this is, we were doing Zoom meetings earlier for our last few meetings, and we switched to Zoom webinar, and it's a pretty similar format. And so, for the board members, we won't notice much difference, it will probably follow the same rules, which is try to mute ourselves if we're not speaking, just to cut back on background noise. And then, as we go through conversations, you know, unmute yourself to speak, and we'll be doing voting, as we've done voting in the past meetings, where I'll call your name, and then you just have to state your name, and then how you vote for each of our recorded votes. And then, we have a list of attendees, so those members of the public who are attending our meeting are gonna be able to follow through, follow along to our conversation, but they're not gonna be able to unmute themselves and hop in. And when we do our public comments, I will ask participants to raise their hands, as we've done in previous meetings, and then either Steve or myself will be able to unmute them, and they'll be able to provide public comment, but they won't be on video, so we'll hear their voices, but we won't be able to see them as they do their public comment, which is okay, but, so we'll be able to be as interactive as we have been in previous meetings, but this way, we'll just see ourselves, there won't be a whole lot of people whose faces we'll see like the Brady Bunch on our screens, and only we have the ability to unmute ourselves and to join the discussion. So, this feels like a pretty solid way to do these meetings, that provide the public with the opportunity to participate and listen in and hear, and provides us some level of control over, as people hop in and out. And so, the second item on the agenda here is the Statement of Emergency Conditions, and so, we are still operating under the Governor's Executive Order, which allows for us as a public body to conduct our business remotely and electronically, and so, we're doing all of our work here on Zoom, still following 91A, and so, these are still public meetings, the public has access to these meetings, we'll still be producing meeting minutes and following all the other criteria under 91A, but because of the emergency declaration, the emergency order, all of our, our business meeting can be conducted totally electronically, which we're doing. So, the third item is additions or deletions from the agenda by the superintendent, so, Mr. Chamberlain.
Sure, there, a couple of additions, we added an update regarding the HEA Early Retirement Program, so we'll discuss that. I also included names, Mandy Hibbert is the nominee for the Director of Student Services, and Jeff Daly, I considered that name as the nominee for the Director of School Counseling, and I also added in the board packet, just for the boards, a letter I sent to the faculty regarding the impact of an annual, not having the annual meeting, so that's in the packet as well.
Thank you. How about correspondence?
There are two correspondents in the full, in the share folder, and they're from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, information about new board member webinar training, and also, information about school board chair webinar training, just for your efficacy.
Thank you, and I would encourage our new board members, and I would encourage our new board chair to take advantage of those trainings, because they are very good, they are very informative, so if you could take advantage, you could find the time, you should, as new board members, I'm gonna try my best as new board chair to take advantage of that as well. So, next item is approval of minutes, so we had the minutes from our previous meeting of April 2nd, 2020, included in our packet, and so, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
I will second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on those So, seeing none, we'll do the roll call, so we'll start with Andrea.
Andrea Folsom is a yes.
Norm?
Norm Kupel is a yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
And Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
All right, and Jim O'Brien is a yes, and so, it's 5-0, so we've approved the minutes, and so, our next item on the agenda is our first opportunity for public comment, and so, for those attendees who are on the line, who wish to do public comment, I'm gonna give a brief, a brief tutorial for how to get our attention for this, so if you scroll down with your, with your cursor, your mouse to the bottom of your screen, there's a panel that says Participants, if you click on that, it's gonna bring you to, you should see a bunch of names, including your own, on a list, and there should be a button that says Raise Your Hand. If you click the Raise Your Hand button, it will show up on my screen, it'll probably show up on everybody's screen, but it'll show up on my screen, that you want to provide comments, and then, I will call your name, and I'll unmute you, and you can provide your comments, and all I'd ask is if you would, in the beginning of your public comments, just state your name and your address, if you would, that would be fantastic. So, with that, if you do wish to speak, there's another public comment that's on the agenda towards the end of the meeting, and so, as I said, this is the first opportunity, but not your last. So, with that, our first hand up is Tammy, and so, Tammy, you're unmuted, and I'll ask you to speak. I thought I unmuted, let's try again. Oh. Tammy, there we go, now we can hear you, sorry about that.
Tammy Clay, 62 Buckingham, Hamline. I've been asked by people I'm passing by or hearing from, asking if Huffington School, the Huffington School budget is going to be reduced, like a lot of the, like, some of the surrounding towns due to remote learning, or are you gonna turn the money that is saved into getting the maintenance and safety jobs done, like the sprinkler system at Harold Martin School?
So, we have a, on this agenda...
Yeah, I saw it further down, but I'm just wondering if that is what all the budget, the, maybe, little bit of extra money is gonna be used for?
Yeah, so we'll get a financial update tonight, and so, and then, the board hasn't made any, we haven't made any decisions about end-of-year fund balance, and we'll, we'll learn more, as you all will as well, about where we are in our budget, what we're anticipating for a fund balance, and how much we're anticipating, any savings that we may accrue, based upon the current distance learning, so, so it's a good question and a good comment, I know it's on the minds of many in the community, and many of us as board members, that, you know, we'll certainly get a better sense of that tonight, and probably in another month have an even better sense of how we'll end the year.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll save my other question until everyone else is done.
Perfect, thank you, Tammy. All right, and so, we have another person, David DiPiano, and I apologize if I just butchered your name, I'm gonna see if I can unmute you, David?
Hi there.
Hello, thank you.
David DiPiano, 68 Brookwood Lane. I think, as I sit here, remote joining this meeting, you know, we all know that we're going through unprecedented times, the school administrators on the phone, you know, they're doing, I think, the best that they can do in the new environment that we're living in. That said, as a parent who works from home 100% of the time, my question is more directed to the school board and our administrators, really asking, what is the plan, now that we have a, you know, an executive order from our governor, that we're going to be home through the end of the school year, to provide working parents relief during the school day? Specifically around, you know, right now, parents are being asked to make sure their kids are doing the work they're doing, sometimes providing educational support during the day, also, you know, I kind of joke, it's secretarial services, to make sure they get on the meetings and the chats that they need to get on, really just trying to understand, you know, what is the plan to, you know, give those parents some relief during their workday, you know, all the while, trying to maintain academic focus, so we don't have our children get so far behind between now and the end of the school year and the start of the next school year?
David, that's a great question, and I don't, I mean, I don't know how to answer, and I made a look to some of my fellow board members, and maybe offer their opinion, I mean, just as, on a, on a personal level, I feel like I'm probably in a similar boat as you, I have three kids here at home, two in the, one in eighth grade, one in high school, and then, a nine-year-old in third grade, and so, I completely understand the, the challenge that we all have with, with both trying to do, have a job and do our day jobs, as well as be teachers and, and helpers to our children, so, I appreciate the question, and I don't know that, I, as a board member anyway, have a good answer to, to your question other than, you know, continuing outreach to the teachers and to the administrators to let them know how it is going for you personally, and seeking assistance that way, which may not sound like a good answer, but I'm not sure I have a better one, but I would welcome any other board members who wish to jump in, please.
David, do you find it easier during the day for your, getting your work done, when your kids, once you get them on the meeting or into the assignment, are engaged with schoolwork, or is it easier for you when they're not really doing schoolwork and they're playing or doing other things?
Yeah, it's a, it's a good follow-up, I think the broad, you know, as we've gone through the first several weeks of remote learning, I think we've already seen several revisions of the process, right, the first couple of weeks, you know, a lot of it was pointing students to third-party websites, pointing them to other YouTube videos, you know, and certainly the first two weeks, you know, all the students were sent home with packets with at least two weeks' worth of printed material, I'm sort of seeing, you know, I have two kids in the school system with different teachers, you know, and even the different teachers are doing it different ways, right, so I have one teacher who's providing the entire week's schedule upfront, which is certainly helpful, because you can sort of see what's coming up, we have another teacher who's sort of providing one day at a time, but yes, I mean, if a student is, is on a classroom meeting with a reading specialist or math specialist, or even their teacher, that takes quite a bit of the pressure off of the parent, right, because they can go through the math problems, or the reading and spelling work with their teacher, versus, you know, kicking them out to a third-party website, where they have to follow whatever the process that that, that website gave you, and oftentimes, you know, that they're so used to their teacher and the staff that they've been working with, that a lot of times, they'll watch a 10-minute-long video and come right back and say, "I don't get it, Dad, can you help me with this problem?" versus, if they had the opportunity to work with their teacher more, I think that's, that's really what I'm asking, right, is, can we get the students involved on meetings, even if it's in smaller group settings, more with the teaching professionals than what we're getting today?
Okay, that's good feedback, thank you.
Yeah, and we will have, you know, an update on distance learning later in this meeting, but that, that is really good feedback, and I know you're not the only parent with that type of concern, and so, raising that here is great, because I can see some of our principals and leadership team taking notes on that, and, you know, this is a work in progress, so hopefully, we...
If I could just indulge one more, one more comment, there was the previous question about budget, I would be personally interested in understanding, you know, if it's a question of resources for our teachers, you know, I mean, all the laptops have video cameras in them, the phones have video cameras in them, personally, I would like to see more recordings from our teachers, you know, even if, you know, they need to record a lesson and provide it, and if they can't give it in a group setting, if we need to buy our teachers more materials and more supplies, I've got to imagine not having kids in school is certainly saving the district money right now, so I'd certainly be willing to entertain that question, too.
And I don't know if that, well, I know each teacher, teachers are all, are incorporating in these, sort of, the, how they can teach the courses in different ways, and so, I don't know, Steve, if you have an answer to that question, is this something to tackle in the distance learning section?
It's, it's great feedback for us, as Mr. DiPiano said, we are trying to iterate this and get better, and we'll talk about it down in the agenda a little bit, and we've increased our leadership team meetings in trying to revise and be real, real listeners to what's going on at home, but yes, we, we are trying to support teachers in finding their way, some teachers very comfortable taping episodes, some are using CSAR, Screencastify, some are still, you know, working through that technology as well, but I think we are, I think it is growing, I think we are trying to get in this rhythm of what we're doing, but we all, and we spent some time talking about the burden on families, some of our leadership, you know, we are experiencing that as well, so, but this is great feedback for us.
Say thank you, is there anybody else who wants to provide a comment, if now, if so, now's the time to hit the raise hand button? Or, Tammy, put you back, I remember you saying you had a second comment.
Well, I had, am I unmuted?
You're unmuted, we can hear you.
I am, okay, so, I also, to tag on to what that David was, the person before me was saying, you also have to take into consideration that the working parents are also gonna be burdened with higher childcare costs, once this all goes away, if it goes away, some of them are still paying for, or will be having to pay for camps and, and learning experiences for their, their children, because they are full-time employees, and school's gonna be cut short, or there's not gonna be a vacation, so, it's just a, it's a, I mean, the whole world is really crazy right now, but it's a whole learning experience, this whole thing, but take that into consideration, too.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right. Any other comments? So, I'm just gonna read a comment that I received from Ian Tewksbury, who says, "I do not have a microphone on my computer, so I am sending this comment this way. I want to thank the entire Huffington School District for their forward-thinking with all of this. I have several people in different parts of Vermont, and they seem to only be taking the lead from the state level and not being as progressive and forward-thinking as Huffington is." Thank you for the comment, Ian, that's, that's great. Anybody else for public comment? All right, so there is another opportunity moving forward, so, if you're on and you wish to speak again, we'll have public comment towards the end of the meeting. So, with that, our next item on the agenda is for comments by the Huffington School Board, and so, I'm gonna start with our student reps to the Huffington School Board, so they can get themselves ready, and, and so, we'll start with Charlie today. Charlie, how are you?
I am good, how are you?
Doing well, so, what's on your mind, Charlie?
Well, this year, I've, I've done this quite a bit in these meetings, but I have, once again, I have more praise for the Guidance Counseling Office, they're holding weekly meetings for, I know for seniors, and I'm sure for other grades as well, just to get our input, let us explain how we feel, and they're just trying to make these fun events we can do, and stuff like that, and I think they're doing a really good job of just helping us stay more connected, and, yeah.
That's great, thank you. Ella?
I have nothing else to add, basically just echoing what Charlie said.
That's so unlike you, Ella.
Yeah, couldn't think of anything.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you for joining us tonight. So, then, we're gonna circle to the, to the board, and so, we'll start with Andrea.
All right, so, I think the biggest thing that's sort of on my, mind today was just, you know, a few hours ago, we all got the news from Governor Sununu that we would all not be returning to school, and I just want to acknowledge just the sadness and loss, I know a lot of us, both kids and parents, are really hoping that we would be able to return, to at least say, you know, a true goodbye to our teachers, to give our friends hugs, and I know that's really hard, and so, I just want to acknowledge that, both for our board and for our community, that those are all really normal, understandable feelings, and that we, on the board, are feeling them as well. It's not really an uplifting thing, but it's true.
It's reality. Seth?
So, I would agree with everything that I just heard, so, my son wrote a article for the online talent that was supposed to be about the loss of sports, and it started talking about the loss of the Red Sox, but as it continued on, it really became about his loss of his baseball season at Huffington High School, which got me to think about the loss that every student is feeling, and we can't fix it, we really can't, but I also note that everything I see that a teacher does, or a student group does, or a guidance counselor does, that creates any kind of real interactivity and engagement, just increases the mood level, the smiles, the, the feeling that this will be okay, so, for example, there was a debate club meeting that they did by Zoom, and my son just seemed energized after it, because he talked to friends, they debated first, whatever the real issue was, then, they talked about the grading policy, and, you know, I was listening as I was doing my work, and it's just so important, so, any teacher who's out there listening, who's thinking, "Should I try this, should I do it, will it work, maybe it won't work," try it, because sitting on the other end of the computer screen, everything you're doing, whether it works perfectly or not, is having a positive impact on the child of the other end of that screen.
Thank you, Seth, that was incredibly well said, and so deserved. Norm?
Yes, sir, since this being our first board meeting, and I just wanted to send my condolences out to the quiet family, it's tough losing a community member and a wonderful, wonderful family. As today's news from the governor came down, it was quite sadness on me, you know, my first, first thought was the seniors, and I do want, you know, our two seniors to know here, my heart goes out to you both, and to all the seniors that were, you know, graduating this year, I do hope that this board works together with Steve and his team on doing what's best for the seniors for this year, it was hard telling my kids they didn't have an opportunity to go back to see their teacher this year, they blamed me, and I told them it wasn't, it wasn't my, my doing, but, you know, there's a lot to discuss, you know, for distance learning, that I'm gonna say, but I won't comment twice, but, it's sad what happened today, you know, we have the wonderful administration and teachers, and, you know, I appreciate all the work that they're putting into this, but we have a lot of work to do on our end, and I'm sure that we can come up with a reasonable solution to provide what's best for the kids, and, most importantly, you know, we gotta also consider the parents, too, and it's just a sad day, and I just really, really want the community and our, and our seniors, and even our teachers, you know, they're gonna miss seeing those bright smiley faces in the morning, it's a sad day, and I hope that we can get through this together and stay safe, and really stay focused.
Thanks, Norm, Rob?
Yeah, I had an opportunity this week to slide into Kate's interest as advisory via Google Meet, talked to some of my old advisees, so that was kind of a nice, and both of them were seniors, and, you know, it did reemphasize the social side of school, you know, as much as I enjoyed in the classroom, I also enjoyed standing in the hall and giving Ella grief as she went by, which is always, always good, right Ella? But the other thing that we talked about with Shay Lambert, and was how things are gonna change after this is all done, you know, people are gonna reconsider a lot of the ways that we communicate, and necessity of travel to communicate, so, you know, this really is gonna create a bit of a shift in how the world does business, so they were looking at that and thinking about the skill sets that they're, they're developing, so there was an upside to that, all of those, it was really fun to hop into advisory again.
So, I mean, I, I agree with everything, I think, that you all articulated so well, just the sense of sadness and the sense of loss, I think that, you know, I felt, and I know my kids felt, and have been feeling, and I think for us, a couple of things, I guess, one, it's, it's, while we don't like the news that we receive, it is good that we receive the news, and it's sort of, now we can look ahead, and so, we don't have to wonder anymore, we don't have to think, are we gonna go back in May, we now know we're not going to, and so, in some ways, it's, it feels a little bit of a relief, it's sadness, but it's also a relief, because now it's not an open question anymore, which then enables us, I think, to look ahead and plan, and to help our administrators and help our teachers sort of plan for what we know now the future is gonna be, you know, which is a month and a half, maybe longer, of distance learning, and then, that creates an opportunity, and I think, you know, some of our residents said during public comment, you know, this is an opportunity for us to think about what's working, and what in the experiments we've done over the past, you know, month or so has worked, what can we adjust, it gives us an opportunity to do, to do better, both for our kids and for our families, so, in some ways, it's, it's a sense of loss, and the others, it's sort of an opportunity to, to, you know, put our best work ahead, as we think about the next month and a half, and, and how we help our kids end the year the best way possible, and help our seniors celebrate the accomplishments that, that, you know, they have, that we're all proud of, that they should be proud of, and, and really plan for that type of celebration that, especially our seniors so deserve, so, while it is sad, I'm trying to make some lemonade out of some lemons that, that we have here. Well, thank you all, so, our next item, I'm really excited about, so, we had talked about, as, as we brought new, a new board together, to, you know, do a little bit of orientation around some of the, the big challenges and some of our big initiatives, and so, we, we had a special meeting a couple of weeks ago to talk about our building project and where that was at, and so, tonight, we're asking Steve to do a presentation on the Huffington School District's mission, which is really, you know, the foundation and the bedrock for, for how our, our district has been operating, and how we think about our work, and so, this is a very core piece of what it means to, to be in the Huffington District, it's something that I've never seen, I've seen Steve give bits and pieces of it, but I've never actually seen a longer-form presentation, so I'm very, just personally excited about, about this opportunity, and I just think it's a wonderful chance for our, our community to hear this, this presentation directly, and it's something that, because we record these meetings, we're gonna be able to pull this out, pull this presentation together, and share it even more, or more broadly, so more in the community have the chance to sort of dig in to the, to the district's mission, and so, with that, Steve, I'm gonna hand everything over to you for this presentation, so thank you.
Thank you, no, I appreciate that, and thank you all for your reflection tonight, I really appreciated that, I really enjoyed listening to your reflections, so I just grabbed the host, I'm gonna try and share the screen, and... So I just grabbed the host, I'm gonna try and share the screen, and, I'm not sure, let's see what that does. So can you see the, can you see that okay?
We sure can.
So it's just, so the full screen, all that fun stuff, it looks okay, great?
Looks, yeah, it looks great.
So my hope is tonight, talk a little bit about how we got here, how the district got to a mission above all care, and then I'm gonna unpack it a little bit, let's see, where's, we're gonna unpack it a little bit, and then just talk about how its impact and where we are with the mission. Does that sound okay? So just a little bit of the history, so I became principal of Huffington High School in about 2003, 2004, and that was a first year, it was a year before a New England Association of Schools and Colleges site visit, and so we had a year to plan, and in that year, the focus for NEAS, in order to get accredited, was to develop a mission statement. So my training as a very early principal was in the power of a mission statement, the impact a mission statement could have, and really enjoyed that as a first introduction orientation to leading a building, to have that opportunity to develop the mission with the faculty, with the board, with the community, and get it approved. And we did, we developed a mission, and when I, as an early administrator, I used the mission to advocate for program, to advocate for budgets, to unify our work, and one of the lines for the mission that people always heard from me was, our mission was to provide traditional innovative opportunities for students, all students, to maximize their potential. And that resonated with me, and that had real power, and I really enjoyed being a mission-driven building, and the process, and then really focusing our work. And then about six years later, I became the superintendent of schools, and in that time, from the district level, the mission had no impact on our work. I think it was formed years ago in a charrette-type exercise when they formed the district, when the SAU 66 formed, but it had no traction, it didn't, it wasn't used, it wasn't a part of our work, and when I came to the district, it was 49 words that really wasn't represented in the district work. So my training was mission, but when I came to the superintendency, it really wasn't there. So it was my second year, we had the first school board retreat, and that's one of the things I put on the agenda, was taking a look at the district's mission. And it was Larry Donnig, a board member, actually, we were on the jacket St. Methodius, where Larry just turned to me and said, Steve, you just write the mission. I feel I have had a very unique experience in the district, and in the district 10 years, you can just write it, and I said, I said, Larry, we don't, you know, one person doesn't write the mission, you do it as a community event, and that's when he used, Steve, do you know what a camel is? A camel is a horse by committee. And he said, Steve, if, that's how you get 49-word missions. So that started me thinking about the district mission in that process. My first couple of years were pretty learning experience, but that was always in the back of my mind. And through my work as a principalship, all the way through my superintendency, I had developed theme-based leadership practices, and as Rob knows from my time in the building, all the way through my time in the last 12 years, 11 years as superintendent, I do a lot of reflection, a lot of discussion, a lot of listening with people about where should we be as a district and develop a theme. Well, in one year, through my PhD program, I got introduced with an educational philosopher by the name of Nell Donnigs. Nell Donnigs wrote The Ethic of Care, and it was the most profound experience of my educational career that I got introduced to the ethic, and spent a lot of time studying the ethic, and that, following that introduction is when I developed a theme for a school year called Above All Care. So it was a little bit of a trial balloon, we focused our work on how we care about each other and how we care about kids, but it really resonated with people. That year, that theme, the work we did, the studying, the talking about it, really connected, it connected with me personally, it connected me professionally. In that following year, after talking with the board, I proffered at an opening day that I'm putting forward Above All Care as the mission for the Huffington School District. The board was very excited about that, and we developed a process that year from a professional development day, first few days of school, to lunch and learns, breakfast and banter, and a listening post for the community, and took feedback on throughout that year, and in June of that year, it was adopted for the mission, which for me, it was a pretty seminal point in the work of the district, that the Huffington School District was going to put up in front of everything else that what we're about is about caring about each other, and that was adopted in June 2014. So this is one of the foundation pieces, and this is a quote that I use a lot when I present, nobody cares about how much you know until they know how much you care, and that's Teddy Roosevelt's piece. So just a little bit about overarching concepts about this notion of the ethic of care. It is, it's what's known as a relational ethic. What we're saying, when we're saying, we're talking about care, is that we value the relation, the relation between teachers and students, the relation between administration and teachers and superintendent and teachers and students, so it's a relational piece, it's, that's the function, that we believe that with strong relationships, everything else gets better. And so that's one of the things I'm privileged about at the leadership team and all my discussions, we spend a lot of time talking about how we can care about each other, care about teachers, care about kids. We spend more time about our caring practices than just simply increasing test scores, believing that if our caring is strong, learning is strong, if learning is strong, everything else is strong as well. Now, one of the things, when I put this out there, and I put this out for the community, there was only one community member, and I don't, it was Bob Gerson, I don't know if anybody knew Bob Gerson, but Bob Gerson wrote me not a scathing email, but certainly a critical friend email about this ethic, so there was some pushback. But thinking that this is not a strong ethic, that it's not a rigorous ethic, that, you know, the phrase sometimes when I present is, people think, oh, Steve, all you talk about care, we're just gonna sing kumbaya all day, and that's all we're gonna do. But in reality, the caring ethic is a rigorous ethic, this notion about care, because to take accountability, and I'll talk about this later on in the presentation, accountability is caring. Excusing behavior, not addressing behavior, not holding anybody, yourself accountable or students accountable, matter of fact, is not caring. So this is not about just, oh, you know, Steve's a leftist, this is all sing kumbaya, this is about a relationship, but it's about a very strong relationship and holding people accountable. And Jim, I don't know if you want questions routed, or you want me to just keep rolling?
Why don't you keep rolling, and then save time, we'll have time for questions towards the end, so I guess for people, for the board, you know, and hold your questions, and that'd be great.
Thank you. So we have the above all care, but in connected to that are these five tenants, so these are five statements that I say, this is how we operationalize care. And I'm gonna quickly, and I know it's late, so I'm gonna unpack the statements and talk a little bit about how they get enacted, how they operationalize in a school district. So very quickly, the five tenants are, in order to care, in order to operationalize, in order to care in a school, you gotta know our students. So that's one of Donnigs' tenants, she calls it engrossment, I call it know thy student, and I'll unpack this in a second. The second one is you gotta be motivated about the needs of the one being cared for, we call this doing what's best for kids, she calls it motivational displacement. The third one is that it requires that the one being cared for sees the action as caring, it's about what the student thinks, it's about the student, it's not about the adult. The fourth one, it requires one to assume best intentions, she calls it confirmation, and the last one, it requires a caring act to be acknowledged, and she calls that reciprocity. So these are the five fundamentals, the five overarching tenants, how we operationalize care. So let's just talk about the first one real quick. So the first one, it requires us to really know students. So this is a foundation principle of our school district, it's something that we talk a lot about, is about how do we get to know each child? So the, one of the things that I've always done as a superintendent of school, in my welcome back letter to the community, I say, please write a letter in telling your teacher something that is really important for them to know about your son or your daughter. I talk with teachers, especially new staff, during the first two weeks of school, sit knee to knee, get to know the students, what their passions are, what their strengths are, what their fears are, what their concerns are. So that notion is really, really important. Now, one of the concepts that I talk a lot about with staff is the concept of support and enable, and that's a critical, critical concept for education, because sometimes when you, we wanna support kids so they become more independent and they continue to learn, but we have to be careful that we're not enabling kids and actually preventing kids from learning. And that, the only way you can distinguish between the support and enable is to really know that child. So that's a critical component, I always say, you can't care about someone if you don't know them. So that's the first piece. The second, everybody okay? Just not, everybody doing all right? All right, the second one, it requires the action that is motivated solely by the needs of one being cared for. So in this one, it is, and this is something absolutely that came from my time at the high school, I remember the, I remember the time where I was sitting at a meeting as assistant principal, and a teacher looked and said, can we just talk about what's doing best for kids? And one of the things I'm most proud about in this district is that we make decisions based on what's best for each child. And so, and just so, one thing I didn't mention, as many missions, this is aspirational, right? There is components of this, in full transparency, there's a continuum of investment and adoption in some of these principles, more than others, but as an aspiration, this is what I believe as your superintendent, we're striving for. So here's an example, when I present on it, and this is a very personal example for me, about doing what's best for each child, and understanding that fair is not always equal, but providing what the student needs is, the fair is providing what each student needs, so that's the concept, and sometimes teachers and I struggle about the implementation of that concept. But I was a basketball coach, as many people know, I was a varsity basketball coach at Halls Brookline High School for 11 years. I was, in a lot of ways, a very typical, demanding high school varsity basketball coach, and we had practice every Saturday morning, we had a game Friday night, I didn't want the kids to go out, so early Saturday morning, we had practice, and the kids knew practice was at eight o'clock, you'd be there at eight o'clock, you'd be there a quarter hour, ready to go eight o'clock. And I was a little bit of the drill sergeant type, and so there I am, running practice, and a young, one of my players came in late, and I'll never forget, I turned to him, and I said in my coach voice, my power voice said, start running, I'll tell you when to stop. That was my first reaction, that was the rule, if you show up late, you start running, coach will tell you when to stop. And he did, he got his shoes on, he started running, and running, and running, and a break, I went up and I said, then, and this is the mistake that I made, why were you late? Well, he was late because of a family crisis. He should not have been running that day, what he needed is a coach to sit next to him and say, you doing okay? How's your family? How are you? Instead, I applied the same rule to every situation, no matter what, you're late, you're run. And what I asked teachers to do is sit knee to knee, and now there are times, by the way, where the most important thing is to make that person run, in certain circumstances, but distinguish between when it is the application of a procedure or a policy, or when it is required for dispensation, that's care. Care is not simply, everybody gets treated the same fair, remember, is providing what each child needs. At that point, that child needed support, and I care more about the individual than the practice of making somebody run. So that's the tenant number two, be motivated by what the needs of the child are. Number three, it requires the one cared for to see the action as caring, and then we ask teachers to be really mindful, artful, and skillful, and this is a, this is a challenging tenant, this is very hard, especially when we're involved, and this is where the accountability piece is, when we do wanna hold students accountable, we do wanna support their making different choices, we do it out of care, not out of power, not out of, that I'm, not out of anger, not out of frustration, but we do it out of care. And Rebecca Gagin and I work very close together, so here's an example of the challenging piece. If someone does violate the student, you know, our policy, for example, on substance use, they get sent to the superintendent of schools. In my approach and working with Rebecca closely, is my goal is them to see, though, yes, we do suspend, and we do implement to the full extent of our student handbook, which is a very serious, a very serious consequence, but how can I get them to see that the reason why this consequence is being issued is because I care about them, is because we care about them? That's the frame, it's not because I'm so mad at them, and it's not that, it's that I'm really scared, I'm really worried about them, I care about them, and I want them to make a different choice. And one of the things that we've done, and we fundamentally changed our approach in the last three or four years, is one of the ways to see that families, that this process of when you do have a significant violation of our disciplinary, of our policy, one of the ways we help families see that we care about them is turn this into a learning piece, a learning moment, and what we've done is now, if a student is suspended for five days, they do have what I think is a caring practice, out of school suspension support by an adult, some academic support, but we, I send them, Rebecca and I send them back to school on probationary status, and they have to complete five out of nine learning activities, to not just say we're going to exclude you and punish you, but we're going to provide learning opportunities for you. And parents, and I hope the student sees that extra piece is really about care. What happened a while ago, and it was just a nice example to me about the impact that Rebecca and I are having on kids, right after February break, if you remember, there was a lot of frustration about, are we gonna cancel this, are we gonna have this? It was like, I think, Jim, I told you, it was like a snow day every day, where someone's mad at me for something every day, because you can't, in a snow date, you know, is it, I'm canceling middle school sports, are we cancel the German trip, or we can't, and it was very, very difficult. And for 10 days, it was, it was a lot of 50/50 stuff. Just about when we broke through those clouds, and we got through it, I got two positive emails from two families, appreciating all the work. Both those families, within the last two years, were in my office for significant violations of the disciplinary code. And I thought that was quite remarkable, that the superintendent and assistant principal suspended them to the fullest extent of our policy, and yet, later, they were appreciative and took their time to thank me for some other work, and I think that was a good sign that through this, they saw me not as just as the issuing of the consequent, but a caring person, and I think that's going to reduce our, increase our, reduce our recidivism rate and increase our compliance rate, and that's what it's all about. So I spent time in making sure that they understand that the punishment is about making them have a good, having a better choice, because I care about them, not because I'm powerful and all that fun stuff. That's the third tenant, everybody okay? The fourth one, it requires the one to assume best intentions, Nell Donnigs calls this confirmation, and to be completely honest, this has had a huge impact on my life. The act of assuming best intentions, people laugh when I present, but it's helped my marriage, it's helped my work as a school administrator, and if someone is coming to you with concern, coming to you with complaints, someone coming to me, and yes, it happens quite a bit, with real deficiency in my work, where someone has significant issues with my work, I have a choice, and I can say, oh, they're complaining, there's no value there, or I can assume best intentions, they're advocating in the strongest possible way. And as a poignant example, my second year as superintendent of schools, a family came to me with an appeal of a principal decision, and it was a very, very strong appeal, they desperately wanted this to happen. I could not support it, I supported the principal decision, that's what I thought was best for the children, and the parent was extremely upset, top 5% of upset with me in my time, and they said, I'm going to report you to the DOE, and they did, and they filed a report with the DOE, a report in an area that had to be investigated, about my behavior with their daughter. A very significant, when someone calls a superintendent to the DOE a complaint about something in that area, it was very, very difficult. So I had two, I had two choices, one is I can be really angry at that parent, I can refuse to talk with that parent, I can, I can be as frustrated and angry, or with the help of colleagues, we can look at this as best intentions. That person was advocating for their child, maladaptively, by the way, and not the way I'd like, but the only way they knew how. And in all sincerity, that family needed a double dose of care. They needed me, and they needed every administrator, every teacher in this, in our community, to double down on care for that family, and the only way you can do that is if you assume best intentions, and assume that parent, and I've worked with administrators and teachers on this, in that when a parent comes in hot, and really struggling, they are advocating for the most precious cargo in the world, and it, someone who's in there fighting hard for their child, that's a good thing, and we assume that is a one, and that's not, they're not trying, so that's where we are in this fourth one, we have to assume, you can only care if you're assuming best intentions, I personally had that experience, and in full transparency, within the last month, administrator colleagues turned to me and said, Steve, are you assuming best intentions? Because this is where I fall short sometimes. Everybody okay? Everybody okay? So the last one, the fifth tenet is the reciprocity, it's the acknowledgement of care. And this is critical to the cycle of care. And Michelle Clark and I actually had this discussion, I think this week. And some, and I use Michelle as an example. Michelle sits in the background, she does a tremendous amount of work on benefits, tremendous amount of work on purchase orders, she does so much of the behind the work, sometimes dropping everything, so we can get her registration ready, so someone can go to a workshop and get in that workshop ahead, and there's two days left, and she drops everything. And when a staff member sends an email, a phone, or turn and acknowledges that care, thank you for that work that allowed me to go there, that keeps us, Michelle is absolutely excited to do it again. But if you do it in a vacuum, if there is never an acknowledgement, the human nature is to say, I'm a schmuck, I'm just doing this. And no, it doesn't really matter, and it's all one way. So the other piece is, and I work with special education teachers sometimes, or working with their kids, when a teacher has done a wonderful job of accommodating and modifying a work, when they spent that extra time tutoring and supporting or developing a different way, to work with that student to say, thank you. That really made a difference for me. That effort, if you do that, that teacher is absolutely more apt to do it again, and again, and again. And this force of care is a force multiplier. But if there isn't that acknowledgement of care, it's easy. And I said this to Michelle this week, Michelle, I think I'm a schmuck. And she said, no, Steve, you're not, you know? So that's the piece. So know each child, do what's best for each child, focus on the child, assume best intentions, and acknowledge care. Those are how we operationalize this in, in my world, as our journey to become the most caring school district in the country. And that's the language I use when I talk with teachers and new hires and things like that. So there's a lot of research on care. Then my dissertation is actually about how students, teachers, and administrators experienced care in a small high school, not Hopkinton, by the way, they don't let you do the research in town, a financially challenged high school in New Hampshire. But this is Haze, and Haze did the largest research about middle school kids. And this is, so, these are just some of the areas. Kids see, teachers helping them with academic work. One of the things that's interesting in the studies, that, and I talk about this with new staff, is that if you're at your desk and a student needs help, if you actually go to the student, as opposed to a student coming to the desk, the students see that as more caring. I just think that's an interesting thing. Fun and humor, they think, is caring. Teaching really well is caring. Counseling, trying not to be hard, listening and managing well. Those are some from Haze's article about what middle school kids have seen as care. So a little bit, how does, how have we, one of the things, how we operationalize this, and how is this commissioned into action? And one of the real strengths about the Hopkinton School District is it's considered a very flat organization. That, one of the things that I'm privileged of is I have lots of direct discussions with instructional assistants, with parents, with students, with teachers, and with, it's very flat. So that flatness allows the mission to become integrated quicker into the operations of our schools. So one of the ways that we've integrated the mission is in policy. As the, the first tenet is knowing each child, well, that relates to our confidentiality policy. And we made it clearer, we talked about now confidentiality is a legitimate educational interest. That's our standard. Before, it was a very complicated standard, but now it's a legitimate educational interest. We want teachers to know what they need to know about kids, so they can care about those kids. We've put a component in our collective bargaining agreement, talking about a data review time for kids, whether it's PLCs, or whether it's time during professional learning, where our administrators sit and talk with the faculty about a data profiler of the kids, again, knowing each child. Hiring practices, I think you, you know, we can talk about it later, but the district putting on front and center, the, the brand, if you will, the apple with the heart, this knowing that we're caring about each other, has been a tremendous attraction for people of like mind who want to focus on relationships. If you are a relationship person, this place is for you. If you are, you know, and, and all my time, there's only been one person that got to me, where I was real honest about what our expectations are, and that person said, it's just not for me, Steve. I can't deliver what you're looking for in Hobbs. So we try to, is it a fit, is this focus on relationships? And so we've tried to integrate our mission into action. The impact, I am a mission, I, I, I enjoy, I am a mission-driven person. So I, I like having themes and missions to unify, unify, and so I think it has provided a central focus for our work. I think it is a statement about what our priorities are, and as I said, it's attracted faculty and administration towards schools. So I do believe that the mission has had an impact on our schools. And I want to reiterate, I am under, not a false premise, that everywhere I go, it is care, 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 it is sitting down knee to knee and adjusting, you know, fair is providing what students, I understand where we are. And believe me, when we fall short of caring practices, I hear about it. And I've also, and we've had challenges. I remember writing them, writing a component of installing this as a mission, we had to do some reduction in teachers, and I had a teacher look at me with pretty strong language and say, Steve, I don't think you do care. And there are times, I've had parents call and says, you think, you think you care? You think you're, you know? So it has been a challenging component of putting ourselves out there as a district, or putting something I believe about as a district. And there's times I've driven home and said, I don't know. You know, I don't know if we, if we really can live every day trying to do our best to care about kids and care about each other. So it has been a challenge, but it is, to me, it's been the most fulfilling work in a 33-year career of public education. The last piece, I hope I didn't take up too much time, and, and this is a segue to the next presentation, whenever you would like, is one of the best ways to care about kids, and this goes back to the Haze work, is teach magnificently. You care through magnificent teaching, and look forward to unpacking that concept of where we are in articulating this district's vision about what magnificent instruction is, and how that is in a body middle care. And I hope that was okay. So that's, that's to me, and I don't know how many administrators were on or teachers were on, that's the stuff that we've been working, one last component, what I have done, which is one of the most enjoyable things I do, is I do a new staff orientation. And every month, as the superintendent, I meet with all our new teachers, and we unpack the seven components of magnificent instruction, I spend a lot of time talking about here. Questions for me?
Questions for Steve? Well, I'll, I mean, I less of a question than I more do as a comment. Steve, I, so that was great for me. It was good to walk through each of those components. And, you know, as I think about missions, you know, mission, struck me as something you said towards the end, I mean, a mission isn't, isn't a solution. I mean, it's not the end of the road, it's, it's really, it's really the, the star that you're, you're trying to steer your ship towards. And so what I normally see in organizations is you have a mission statement, usually sits on the wall, and it's, it's, it's not really an actionable statement, it's, it's more of like a grand vision. So the fact, what you just walked through for me anyway, takes a mission, the mission that you, we have, that you even started off saying, is a pretty broad general statement. But having the district take that broad statement and make it actionable, and while you always don't get a perfect, you know, you're, you're striving towards reaching that. So that, that feels important and real to me. And your, your real examples show that it's a struggle, it's not the solution, but, but the fact that our district is, is heading in this direction and is making it actionable is, to me, is really important. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Obviously, having this board, this group, you know, as the transition, I, I just appreciate your reflection about it, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk in depth about the mission, so thank you, Jim.
Seth?
Well, I would say that I was a, sort of maybe a reluctant school board volunteer, and the presentation I heard made me think that, you know, I made the right choice. That presentation was very meaningful to me. It put together a lot of things that I've anecdotally seen as I've watched things go by, but I didn't have the context to understand the bigger picture. And it's an impressive presentation, I've seen lots of presentations in my life, and that's a very impressive presentation. And the more often you can give that talk to different parts of our community, including parents, you know, yes, things don't always go perfectly, but when parents can understand, this is the guiding principle, these are the things we talk about and think about, you know, I wish I had had that presentation when my kids were in elementary school, because it was very meaningful to me. So thank you.
Thank you. I, I keep going, Andrew, if you remember, I always want to go to PTA, I always want to talk about care. I always end up talking about budget, but I always want to talk about care. But Seth, I've done it, I'll happily do this presentation anywhere, anytime, anyplace, because to me, it is the seminal work of our, you know, of, of the journey for us. So thank you.
Other comments or questions for Steve on this? All right. So Steve, thank you again for preparing that and for doing it. It was, I think it's great, and I know we have a lot of members of the community on tonight, too, so hopefully they found value in that as well. So we're gonna move to the next item under Presentations and Staff Reports, which is Administrator Nomination Process. So Steve, I'm going to hand it over once again to you to speak through this.
And I'm gonna, I'll make you the host. And then we get back to it. Sure, and this is, thank you. So just, just real quick on, on the next piece, so a little bit about the nomination process for administrators. Want to make you just catch where we are. So, so we have, in this, tonight, we're talking about the leadership team. So for those who don't know, the leadership team is eight members. It's the superintendent, it's four of us that work out of the central office, and four of us that work in buildings. And tonight, we'll talk about the process about, or the statutory background on that process. So typically, there is, there's an evaluation process that I do, I've worked together with the administrators on a form. We do talk about adherence to the mission, change, educational leadership, culture and climate, all those components. I evaluate them, I try to check in with them mid-year, this has been a funky year, though, completely honest, but typically, we like to set goals in the, in the beginning of the year, mid-year check-in, and then we summarize. And a lot of our administrators, for their own self-evaluation, will get surveys out to their schools or to their direct reports and trying to get some feedback. So, so what's, might be new for some people. So there's the 18914, RSA 1894, in sub-14, governs the nomination process for teachers. And the last component defines teacher. So what that means is there's a continuing contract process. So for some, it's three years, and for some, it's five, depending on if you've had continuing contract status at a previous school district. And so, and what that does, that gives you the right of due process. So for some of our teachers, and for some of our administrators, if there is a dispute about their future employment, they have a right of due process. And so, and for some of our administrators, that right is only protected in their personal service. So our building administrators, Bill, Amy, Chris, and Rebecca, by statute, have the same rights of due process as teachers. And so that means if there was a non-renewal coming, that after so many years, they would have to, they are entitled to see the reasons and the, and the standard, the which supports that non-renewal. The other four, Matt, the Director of Student Services, and Michelle, those protections, and the superintendent, those protections do not exist in law. So those protections are only, only in our professional service contract with the district. So for example, some superintendents have put in the right to due process after so many years. That is not in my contract, by the way. So, so the only thing that I have is that contract, which can be renewed or not. But there are four building principals or assistant principals, they've been here long enough, they have the right of, of due process. So that's how that works. Now for us, we have established that a distinction between a one-year contract and a multi-year contract. And the past practice has been, once you achieve for a building level continuing contract status, that's after three years, you, you can, you have the ability to have a multi-year contract. And we've, we've adapted that same standard to the central office employees, that after three years, they are eligible for a multi-year contract. So everybody except for the new Director of Student Services has met that threshold is, and is in existence on a multi-year contract. And so because of their performance, and it's, it's a two, it's a win-win, they get the security of a, a multi-year contract, and we get the commitment of a multi-year of those strong administrators. So that's how that works. So tonight, there's a nomination slate for the, the leadership team level of administration in our district, and all of those are on multi-year eligibility because of their, either they've achieved continuing contract status, or they've been here long enough. I hope that helps. I know when, early in my tenureship as superintendent, people were very surprised and didn't realize that principals and assistant principals have the same protections as a teacher. That was new for many people in the community.
Any questions? Yeah, questions for Steve? Excuse me. Excuse me. So seeing none, this is an action item that we'll, we'll vote on at the end of the meeting. And so if there's no other questions, we'll move on, on to the next agenda item, which, if you bear with me, I'll put the agenda back on so we know what it is. All right, so we're gonna move on under items for board discussion. And the first one is distance learning update. And so we received one update, as we all spoke about at the beginning of the meeting, which is distance learning will continue through the end of the school year. And then we'll ask Steve to speak to phase two structure.
Sure, and, and I thank you for the people providing, providing feedback at the, at the beginning of the meeting, just a couple of things. We meet now twice a week as a leadership team to check in. And one of the things that is a comment, if we do understand the, the stress, the anxiety, and the overload of, of what's going on in homes, we know it, some know it very personally, but certainly know it through feedback. And we always want, so one of the struggles, believe, one of the, just the foundation struggles is, and we spent about 40 minutes talking about attendance. How do you take attendance in a, in a distance learning environment? And there's basically two approaches. And there's this notion of asynchronous or synchronous. And so what, when the gentleman said that I give you all your work on Monday, and you have your week to do it, that's asynchronous, right? That gives you, you don't have to be in a certain place at a certain time. And so those who are doing asynchronous learning, anytime you receive work, we could, this, we are looking at as you attended. And now there's also some synchronous time, as we know that everybody's checking in at a certain time, so we can take attendance for that time, and that's synchronous. So, and, and Bill, who chaired the distance learning task force, is gonna bring that task force together, I think, next week, just to see where we are after a month. We decided that even before. But if we want to give parents license, even if it's asynchronous, to turn it into some asynchronous stuff, because we have to give the flexibility, one of the guiding principles of this work is flexibility. And we are taking a look at, it, it, we are, if someone is gone, we call it gone dark, right? If we haven't heard from the family in a couple of days, three days, we are reaching out and working with them. And yes, if they haven't connected at all, then we would call, and we haven't any work before or after, we'll call that absent. But if there is work connected to those days, then the state has given us the flexibility, so we understand in this distance learning environment that it is more flexible. But parents, please communicate and have license to turn some synchronous stuff into asynchronous or vice versa, and we will continue to iterate and develop. One of the goals of our work is to be nimble, is to adjust as we go. So a couple of things, this is the, we went to the four days of structured learning, a further learning and one day of support. The feedback that we're getting is, especially from students, and Charlie talked about the feedback that we're getting through meetings is strong. We think it's, it's a good piece. We also heard in Chris and Rebecca, ready to adjust right away, that the 45 minutes is just too short. So we're looking to expand the length of class already to, to an hour, and we're looking at that. We do have, the leadership team is looking at, surveys going out, I thought I might have some announcement on the calendar tomorrow, so with that, we're gonna send out some surveys to check in with families what they're concerned about. So with that, we're gonna send out some surveys to check in with families what they're concerned about. Amy's done some really good job. This will be a little bit more district level on it. One of the questions that we've got feedback, and this is what's a struggle, and parents and teachers who've emailed me about the calendar, understand the 50/50 nature of it, is that we've got some people who would like that, that a non-traditional day. Right now, it's Wednesday Secondary and Friday Elementary. Some would like it aligned, and some would like we remain different because of technology. And if you have it on different days, you can actually parse out technology. So that's an area we're still looking at. But we think right now, the, the needs of Wednesday, Friday outline aligning it. So the, we're still working on the attendance. We're gonna increase class, length of class a little longer at Secondary again. We're pretty committed to the four for further learning and one to catch up with kids. We think that's working right now. We do, and we, and we can be stronger. And I'll talk with leadership team. We're meeting tomorrow at two, just about what kind of messages and support we can give to families to give them license to, you know, to take a break, to balance their life in a way that's successful for them. Chris and Rebecca have done a lot with assessment. We're understanding that right now, it's very difficult to get tremendously valid because there's so much stress and anxiety, but trying to manage assessment in a, in a formative quality way. So I admire, I continue to admire the faculty and how they're engaging, how they're fighting hard to support families. One thing we did do, we delivered. With our bus company, we delivered K through, a P through grade three materials. So every house got visited by one of our eight buses with great support from our support staff to drop stuff off at the end of the highway, end of the driveway. So we're extending time, we're giving license, we're working on attendance, and we delivered another packet to people. That's my update.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. We have a couple of questions, so we'll start with Norm.
Steve, I can't tell you how excited my kids were to see a, a school bus, you know, when I came by. Steve, a couple of things I just wanted to talk to you about. One thing is about workload. Are the students getting the same amount of workload as, for example, my daughter being in second grade? Is it being the same amount of workload for each, each section? You know, I kind of get a feel from other parents, you know, when I'm trying to work with my, with my daughter and, or with my son, and they're saying, you know, they got more work than, and it's not the same. I'm a little, little concerned about that. And my other question, or, or comment or suggestion is, is it possible for the leadership team to load the schedule for the week? The reason for that is, some days are better than others. Some days are better for me at work or for my wife, since we're both working. We're trying to figure a way to accommodate the schedule in which I'm like, okay, I have these conference calls on Wednesday. I can get a little bit of Wednesday's work done on Tuesday. Is there a way that we can load a schedule each week for these kids? So parents can say, hey, you know what? We can start earlier today and get done earlier. Because for me, I'm still working. And I, and I want to work with the district on this, where we can help balance the anxiety for parents who are still working or are essential employees, where I can provide the best for my child while I can still do my work.
Great questions. So, you know, our guiding principle in traditional classes and distance learning is we teach students, right? So we ask teachers to be responsive to where they see feedback is coming and success from kids. We have a structure of our curriculum, but we do want teachers to choose the best pedagogical choice as they apply that. I, I've never, I've never put a lot of pressure on people to be on the same pace at the same time because classes are so different. That being said, we have core principles that we want to ensure. But my gut says, as we're still beginning this journey, you know, we're in a few months, that there's gonna be some gaps, and there's going to be some stronger components and some areas that are improvement. So I can't imagine that everybody is locked up on equality of work at the time. It just, to me, that's, I know the teams are still gathering, they're trying to do their best they can, but that's something we can certainly monitor, and I can talk with the teachers about. The other piece about being the more asynchronous and providing the time, and so you guys can, can apportion your time. And we'll talk about that tomorrow, Norm. We'll, we'll see if that is a more successful model. Now that we're into this, we're not in this, obviously, as Jim talked about, the short haul. And, and right, we're in this for the long haul. And maybe that could be a great help to families if we can front-load some stuff and give them more flexibility to, to apportion their time based on their schedule. So I'll make sure that that's on the agenda tomorrow and see how we can develop something like that. We do want to be nimble. We do want to react, you know, and, and develop ways that was more, especially now that we're in this for, you know, a significant amount of time. But I appreciate both those questions.
Robbie, your hand up.
Yes, Steve, can you give me a little bit of clarity on what's going on, on the, for lack of a better word, off day? So either the Wednesday or the Friday, are kids meeting in classes? Or the lower elementary, upper elementary classes meeting? What's going on there? And I think part of my question is gonna relate to the next item, which is the calendar, and perhaps speak a little bit to David's concern about unloading some of the stress off of parents. So can you give me a little bit of sense as to what those days are like?
Sure. My understanding is, there is not the traditional class time, the synchronous class time, that, that teachers, kids are making appointments with teachers for help. Their, a support staff are checking in with teachers. At the secondary level, we are doing, as Seth spoke about, we're doing some clubs, and we're doing some of those activities. At the elementary, it's more unified arts, right? We're doing more of those opportunities, more choice for kids during that time, and more check-ins and support. So there isn't the traditional, you know, synchronous, you must be in class at this time. It's catch-up. It's, Rebecca does a good job of giving some general tasks, you know, that, that people can do, and social emotional support, class meetings times, and things like that.
Thanks. I'll hold my, my next question till we get to the calendar.
Sure.
Steve, is there, is there a need for additional resources from the, from the administration, from teachers? Are you, are you getting requests? Do people feel like they have both the technological tools in order to accomplish, you know, what, what they want to do in their classrooms? And is there, you know, I think David asked a really good question. I mean, is there more that we should be thinking about doing in terms of the budget and reallocating some resources? Have you got a sense of what those needs are? Especially as we think about the next month and month and a half, like, are the things that we should be doing?
Sure. I check in with Matt regularly on device utilization and stability. You know, what's the return rate? Are they enduring this kind of use, you know, the, the multi-use at home? And we have, we're strong on devices. We have some in reserve and deployed, and I think we're doing fine there. We are working on, as we talked about last time, getting hotspots for some families. Those are just, you know, there's a big demand on hotspots in the country. We are, where we are supporting within our procedures, the ability for teachers to transfer funds into different areas. For example, Donna Zeca took some books to now an overdrive account. So instead of buying, you know, bricks and mortar, well, you know, the paper books, we transferred that money into the overdrive account. And now teachers and faculty can take books out, multiple copies electronically. Though it has been requested by the principals, and I'll try to get on this pretty quick, it's, it's through our title grants. We can use title grant federal money for subscriptions. And so there's two subscriptions that we will put in the grant, perfectly appropriate, and that is Screencastify and CSO. And so those, we were, I think we were running on, on, you know, 90-day entry-type accounts. And so we have a little bit of a window. But, so we're moving money or grant money into supporting subscriptions. We still, and we do, we do want to support teachers. We do have some regulations. For example, a purchase order has to be done first. And what we have been able to do, and Michelle is, if, if a teacher wants to purchase something, it goes to administrator, even if it's a little bit unusual, you just call Michelle, and she'll figure out what line, where it comes from, where it goes. But we haven't turned it into the Wild West and just let people just go because we really have to approve the use of town funds before. And there's, to be honest with you, there's been a little bit of that, where teachers, I think, even though we, we do turn things around very quickly, see this really well. And so we're working through those procedures. But I think the funds are there. I think the creativity is there. There's a little bit of regulation because we do want to approve POs prior to, and a little bit of transfer in money, in grant money. But I, I think our, our devices are holding strong. Does that help?
No, that's, that's good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Norm?
Yeah, sorry to ask another question. I apologize. Steve, as you know, learning from home can be difficult for, for anybody. I think we might have talked about it in a previous meeting, but can you explain to me a little bit about the, the structure regarding grades for our high school students? I know that they're gonna be doing third and fourth grade merging as one grade. Can you explain a little bit to the board if there's any type of, I don't, I don't want to say curve, or however you guys develop with your team, and how we're gonna approach our students? And understand that some, some students struggle at home. You know, some people are not getting, getting their, their work done the way they would do as if they're, you know, physically present. It's a concern for me. There's students who, you know, do, do well in school but are struggling at home.
No, I, I thank you. And in the care, in, in your tone, and the care for kids comes through, Norm, I appreciate that. And happy to have Chris, and, you know, at the, at the next meeting, you give a little bit more of where we're at, because we'll be two weeks into this. But it was interesting. One of the things that I really appreciate what, what Chris has done and all our administrators is they're connected to the New Hampshire Network of Principals. And it's a really robust network where people share about what they're doing, and with care and guidance of, do you go to a pass fail? Or do you go to a different level? So they are looking at this very humanely and very, with great empathy and great understanding. But the feedback from our kids was, and Charlie and I sent an email back and forth about it, was that in, in, and the reality is that grades are a motivator for kids in Hopton who want to excel. That's, that's a reality. And they felt that if you took that off of their traditional approach that they've been, you know, we, you know, been, been raised on, they're worried about losing the eye of the tiger, if you will, in supporting it. So they are looking at continuing with, with the traditional grading format. They have adjusted the quarters a little bit about percentage of all, trying to understand that things are so different. And they are trying to design assessments to, to achieve some academic integrity. Let's just be honest, it's out there, right? We want to, we want to do the best we can to ensure academic integrity, but also providing multiple forms of assessment so we can get what the students know. But in, in Norman, in complete honesty, I think Chris and Rebecca and Amy and Bill have dug into this more than me in the last month. I've been part of these conversations, and I'm happy to have them come, you know, at the next meeting, you know, the first one of the month that they typically come to and speak to it on more thorough. But those are the discussions. We have to be very careful about testing in an environment where there's a lot of anxiety because we perform, so that's one of our fundamental principles, is take a look at that. And it's also understand where we are in trying to implement grading with fair and honest empathy to what we're doing. And I, and I have great respect and admiration for our teachers as the First Tenant of Care says, to know each kid and trying to do it in a way that supports their desire to achieve, but does it in a humane way.
Thank you, Steve. Andrea?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't so much have a question, just a comment. It's been really interesting to, to see how quickly students, parents, teachers, and administrators have had to learn. And I think this learning curve is, you know, crazy, crazy big, very fast. But I really hope that we're also noting all of the things that are working and working well, and any creative ideas that we can bring forward to when we hopefully are able to return to our classrooms. And, and I just would not want this experience to be for naught. I think that, as horrific as it is, you know, I, I think that it is also a time that we can pull perhaps some newer creative ideas of what works or what doesn't work, and integrate those moving forward. So that's just a comment that I would have.
No, thank you. Actually, it was a discussion I had with, with John and Scott about what really works really well, making sure we continue that. And if you remember, one of the things in our contract was how, look at Blizzard bags, right? So there are, so all this learning, we don't want to put it, you know, behind us. We want to integrate it as appropriate as we can, as you just said. Take what's done really well. And it may fundamentally change, even though everybody knows how much I like calling snow days, it might fundamentally change our future in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I, when I think about sort of where we're at, where we've come from, where we're at in sort of the next phase, you know, I just reflect on your ability and your team's ability, including all the teachers to, you know, I think to assess the situation and then to, to adapt and be flexible. And so I just, again, encourage you guys to, to continue that, to continue being flexible, continue having these conversations. Because, because your own, this is all new to all of us and to all of our students. And so it's gonna require that flexibility and the ability to adapt in order to sort of, to keep kind of moving forward. And so anyway, I congratulate you guys because, you know, seeing those school buses pull up to deliver the, the bag to my kids was a sure sign of, of, you know, adapting to the situation and sort of taking all your resources that you have in order to make something like that happen. So anyway, I applaud you. This, this isn't easy, and you guys are doing a good job in a tough situation. So the next item on the agenda is the school calendar. And this has been brought up several times. And so Steve, I know that at our last meeting, we had asked you to do a survey of the community, including the school community, the, the teachers and faculty, and, and go broader. And I know you've done that. And so interested to hear sort of what that has resulted in. And then I guarantee there'd be some robust discussion on sort of the decision that we have coming up. So, thank you, Steve.
Sure. It was, in all my time of doing surveys in the Hopton School District, this had the most participants by far, over 1,100 or 1,000 or so participants. And I very quickly did some pie charts. And I think I included that in the packets. Hopefully you saw the results. You know, a little bit over 50%, there we go. Thank you. And there, there are the numbers, factored by faculty, parents, and students. The faculty, the majority, we'd like to keep grinding through and do the five and get out about June 5th, June 8th. Parents, same type of thing. They were, I think they were the highest group that wanted to keep grinding through, about 53, almost 54%. And then students, who I think were above 50% as well, 52. Lot of feedback, all pleasant, by the way. No one was, every people just providing their feedback. And I'm, and I'm a little bit, as most people know, a little bit of a softie and got a chance to talk with some teachers with littles at home. And just their effort and their work, I, it just seems like a couple of days off would help, be helpful. But I get it. And, and so I, the, some is, I think Concord, you add, Concord is taking the full week. I think Bo is doing the hybrid. So I still, even though I, I see the results, I believe what's best for student learning under this environment, I would stand with that, with the hybrid. But I completely understand that, you know, that based on the data, the board will make the best decision that they think represented the community. This isn't, you know, to me, this isn't like a, one way or another, it's not, you know, it's not the most impactful. But we will serve at the pleasure, and the faculty will, will do whatever the board deems as appropriate. But hopefully you felt that I provided the information to the community and provided you with the information that you wanted. That was my goal.
No, thank you, Steve. And you, you did, you did a great job. And I know, I know my kids got the survey, and they took it, we took the survey. So it definitely was a broad section, and I know it was appreciated because I do think people do appreciate being asked and being able to put, put their thoughts forward and then having, you know, the transparency of having the results here broken out by those three, those three categories is really helpful. So let's, I don't know if anybody has any questions for Steve before we sort of get into a discussion on what we want to do? Any clarifying questions? That would be helpful. I know, Rob, you said you had, you had a question. I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
I'll, I'll lower my hand. Not so much a question, but sort of my mindset at the point, and a little bit of a proposal. So I honestly thought that when I asked Steve or suggested that we do the survey, that people would want the week. And that's clearly not what most people want. So I feel it's important that we, you know, hold to the others of most folks. And I would support, you know, as Steve said, working, moving on through. But I also get that there's folks out there that are really struggling. But I also get that there's folks out there that are really struggling with five days a week. So I would strongly hope that the leadership team, Steve would reconsider adopting the four to one work week that was put out, that early recommendations that was supported by every major education association in the state, where it is kids for four days and teachers doing what they need to do to prepare for the next week. That would serve both masters. That would get us out a little bit earlier, but it would also take some of the pressure off of families. It would take some of the pressure off of teachers. And I think it would be the better model moving forward. I just think that going five days a week, trying to maintain that typical, you know, model, even though it's altered, is not what's the best situation right now. You know, I think the contact with the kids and now that they're having Google meets and classrooms and seeing each other is important. But, you know, it's seven or eight more weeks. And I think we can give people, instead of just two days off on either end in the hybrid model, we can give them six days off between now and June 5th. And I think that creates a lot more energy and focus on what people need to do. So, so that's my, that's my proposal for how I would vote and what I would hope we would do.
Oh, thanks, Rob. Steve, did I see your hand come up? Do you want to respond?
Just the, if we go to a no student day and if we started that now, I, I think that's, that's 15 days. That's about 90 hours. That could impact our last day of school by having a student available day that counts as a student day. And that keeps our calendar moving. I can look into it. But the concern is if we have a no student day, if there is no school that day for students, then that is a day off a week between now. So that's extra hours or extra days we have to do.
So the way I counted it up, Steve, it would be, if we started next week, it would be seven days. And part of my thought process was that if students wanted to meet with a teacher that day, teachers would be available. But there would be no expectation that students need to be available. You know what I'm saying? So the, the teacher's door is open to conference, to go over work if necessary. But the parent doesn't have to worry about making sure that the, the fourth grader is in the math school classroom, that kind of thing.
And I'd say that's pretty close, Rob, to our model now. We don't have, on Wednesday, the kids aren't in class a specific day or on Friday, is my understanding.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's happening everywhere, but I, I could be wrong.
No, and, and as could I. I mean, I can certainly talk with, but certainly we absolutely will talk about it. We do, the, the spare intent of this is to have a different day to leave pressure without question. We want to acknowledge family pressure. So thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was muted. You're supposed, you're supposed to have heard me, Andrea. I'm sorry.
I was, I was wondering about that. I had a quick question for you, Steve. Was the, the faculty survey that was sent out, was that sent out just to teachers, to teachers and administrators? Who got to do that?
Any, almost every faculty member took it. So it wasn't just teachers. It was support staff. We, if, the number was about 180. We have about 180 staff. So it's just about everybody.
Okay, great. Yeah, since I'm unmuted, I'll give my thoughts. You know, I, I received a lot of feedback as well, as I'm sure most, all of the board members have for, for a whole, basically for every single thing that was represented. And I, I know that it, it split pretty 50/50 with folks either wanting to power through or wanting some sort of break, whether it is a full break or a hybrid break. And when I'm thinking about this, honestly, if, if at this point you are wanting and needing a break, I would put a little more emphasis on those folks because we have seven more weeks to get through this. Personally, I think I would be in favor of a hybrid. I would be in favor of something that gives a little bit of break. It keeps moving us forward. And the reality is, is if we do the hybrid versus going full steam ahead, it is a two-day difference. You are getting out on a Wednesday instead of on a Monday. You know, and I, I think for that small difference at the end, currently it could make a, a larger difference in how folks are coping. And then just speaking to the Fridays, I know, so I have kids in two grades and I know that on Fridays, basically I just say, do specials or whatever you're going to do. I know that for, for us at least, it's been our experience, the very small sample size of two. So I can only speak to that, but I know that for us, Fridays, since they're in elementary school, are, are really not needing, I don't have to really be on my kids to be engaging in class.
Norm, you had your hand up. Thank you, Andrea.
Hi, yeah, thanks, Jim. My question for you, Steve, is what is our other districts around us doing? You know, I, I've heard, you know, we had a brief conversation a little bit about our sister around us, you know, other districts and stuff. And I guess, you know, for me, you know, Andrea's right, you know, I've heard from multiple different people on where they stand with this whole distance learning. And quite frankly, you know, I'm hearing from people, they, they, they want it done. You know, they really want to get through what's best for their kids. What the kids are going through right now is probably one of the biggest lessons in life they're going to learn. And they're looking to be, they're going to experience in this lesson for the whole summer. And, you know, it is important for this board to talk about, you know, I, I agree above all care for our, for our children, but we need to look at our parents too. Our, our, our parents, we need to, you know, the parents, we got to look at teachers, we got to look at everyone on this whole scope and really determine what is best for everyone. So if you could comment a little bit, what our, our surrounding districts are doing, is doing, that would be really helpful, I think, for the board to, to know. You've always compared and contrasted what other districts are doing. So that'd be great if you could elaborate a little bit on that, please.
Sure. The majority of districts in the state are taking the five. That's my understanding. I, as I said before, I think Bo is doing the hybrid. I know that as dad, Concord was in the newspaper, I think, the other day. I think they're taking the full five. I, you know, I can ask if Amy or Bill or Chris or Rebecca or Ron, but I, I do think the majority of people are taking the full five vacation, giving people a chance to recharge and finish through it. I, and any administrator, administrator, feel free, free to weigh in if I missed that one, but I'm pretty sure that's where we're at, is the majority taking the five.
But a lot of school districts, if I'm not mistaken, are ending school a lot earlier.
Some are, and, and that's a discussion that we had with the, the move to if we simply went to hours. If you, if the board asked me, said, Steve, we're going to count all the hours, we're going to end at the night, at the height, at the secondary level, it's 990 hours, state, you know, state requirement. At the elementary, it's 945. And to end on the hours, we had a discussion about that as a leadership team. And, and we felt that going through our calendars for our, for all, for all our reasons, including our free reduced lunch program, because if, if we end school, we end our free reduced lunch program, our special ed services. And, you know, there's E S Y, there's a lot of confusion about extended school year as well as our, our commitment to it. But so, but yeah, some are going to hours, not everybody. But it's, you know, I think everybody might have seen the Rochester May 15th date, that's, they decided to hit the 990th hour and send everybody home. We felt that moving through our, our calendar was the right thing to do for kids in the community. But okay, I didn't give you a date on hours. I'm happy to do that.
It's up to, I mean, I'd, I'd be interested to see it if Jim and the, the board members. I, I guess one of the questions I had for you, Steve, is if a parent decides to withdraw their child from the school and it's just too much, do we still receive state aid for that individual?
So that's an interesting question. We, I've had one, one family within, during the distance learning program, go to homeschool and felt that the distance learning expectations, it was too much for their family right now. So they just moved to homeschool and that means they govern their learning for the year. So that's only one. So if there is a withdrawal, that in theory would impact, so our adequacy is based on enrollment, first day and last day enrollment. But it's also prorated, Norm, so I mean, I don't think it would be a substantive change yet.
Okay, then Jim, Jim, I want to make one recommendation. I would be interested to see the hours. And I know we have quite a bit on our agenda today. I would make a recommendation to you if you see fit, since people probably came specifically for this topic to maybe offer a public comment just on this because we have quite a bit left. Just a recommendation.
No, I appreciate that, Norm. Well, let's get through this discussion first. I mean, we've had a lot, there's been a lot of opportunity for people to comment as well as surveys. And so I, I, I'll consider it, although we have a, we have a lot of information at our fingertips. I'm not sure there's a right answer here. And so, so anyway. So Michelle, you had your hand up first, and so I'd like to call on you.
All right, thanks. So I just had, I looked at the internet tonight before the meeting and Concord actually is revisiting because of the fact of there's been pushback from parents on that. And actually they're looking at more of the Merrimack Valley model, which I believe is having the Monday of that week off. So I just thought I would just point out that because that's like fresh in the news.
Thanks, Michelle.
No, that's great. Thank you. Seth?
So I guess when I look at the data, I see half, I think I fall in with Andrea, that I see half the people approximately are looking for some kind of break and half say power through. I'm also concerned, and I mean, I know there's only a couple of days we're talking about here, but I don't think we're going to have the robust summer activities for our children that we typically expect. So these ideas that we should rush, rush, rush to get out don't really resonate with me particularly at this point. And it strikes me that I'm also concerned about five days off and what do we do with the children? And I think the hybrid at least respects about half the community that's saying, we would like some kind of break. And also, you know, understands that the other half say, let's power through. But, you know, if the other half is all saying, let's power through because there's some great thing on the other side, I think there might be some disappointment there. And so I'd like to respect the people who are looking for some kind of break.
Yeah, thanks, Seth. You know, I've been, I've been, I mean, I've been kind of going, what's, what's the non-political term for it? I've been going back and forth in my mind, you know, between, between the hybrid model and sort of the, the, let's get it done. And my, my thinking was, can, you know, by powering through, we, we end earlier in June, which I agree, you know, we, we don't know if there's going to be the, you know, the beach vacations, we all hope they're going to be, you know, come end of school. But there's also, I, I think for some parents, I would say, including myself, you know, the added stress that the school day brings. And while I think the, the district and the administration, our teachers are doing a wonderful job keeping things moving, being employed full-time, having a spouse employed full-time and being the teacher at home with students with the curriculum. And really, you know, the added stress to get, get the work done because it's there and you want your child to learn and you feel obligated. That is an added stress. And so for me, it's like, how, how quickly can we, we get what we need to get done and remove that added stress to our parents and to our community? And while there may not be something brighter on the, the other side, not having that added burden in sort of a time when we all have added burdens felt good to me. Although then when I hear Andrea, you know, bring up the days on the calendar by, by going to the, going to the, the, the middle of the road model, I guess, it is only a few extra days. And so you sort of get the, a couple of days off during the week, not really coupled with, with having a much more extended day, uh, school period that you would normally have. Anyway, so that's, the, the stress has been what's mostly been on my mind because I would just say I feel it. And so maybe, maybe it's more for me trying to, trying to remove as, some of that stress as much as I can off, off of what I think I feel. And I would assume other parents feel as well. So I'm going to, Chris, I'm going to call on you. Your hand was up and then Rob, you're up next. And then we'll try to, you know, maybe zero in on a couple of these, maybe factor some of things out so we can narrow in on the conversation we want to have.
Thanks, Jim. Norm, just to give you some information, weekly I've been participating in principal meetings. There's about 30 to 40 principals that jump in on an online meeting. And we have a, a couple of different spreadsheets that we have going to collect some data. So just to give you some, just the, the board some data in regards to who's doing what for April vacation. Out of 31 respondents, there were 10 schools that are doing, are not having April vacation. There are 12 that are, five doing some type of hybrid model, something similar to what Steve was talking about or some other model. And then there were four schools that were undecided yet, or four districts that were undecided as they were waiting either from their superintendent or a school board decision. So those are just some numbers for you, Norm, if, if that helps.
That does, Chris. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Rob?
So I, I guess I'm just going to go back to the proposal I threw out there as a way that mitigates the concern about powering forward. I just saw Corinne and Joy threw a chat up there about what the kids are saying that, you know, that they're in a rhythm and they want to keep going. What are we going to do at home for a week? Now, granted, those are high school kids. But if our concern is lowering stress and anxiety on kids and families, then if we go to a model where it's kids four days and one day off with teachers available, I can't imagine that anybody at the state is going to give us a hard time about how we're doing this because everybody's trying to figure it out. So I don't think this is one of those points where maybe I'm wrong, but I can't imagine the DOE saying, oh no, that's not acceptable. It truly, to me, seems the way to solve the scenario and put people in a four-day-a-week mode with the option for that fifth.
And, and I guess I, I feel like we were there already. I mean, from my own experience, like I can speak to my third grader, you know, we have four days of instruction. The fifth day is for us to catch up on maybe things that we missed. And so as, as me being maybe the bad teacher I am, sometimes we skip assignments or we don't get to anything. And so we just know on Friday, there's no, there's no set schedule. It's, it's the day. And Andrea said that they do specials. We do some core curriculum that maybe we missed, we skipped over and then, you know, some other things. But so that fifth, that fifth day, the Friday in our, in that case, really isn't a day of instruction. It's really a day for me as a parent to get what I should have done or could have done those other four days. And then today was one, yesterday was Wednesday and I know from my, my, my students at the middle high school, you know, they had to check in, they had to check in in the morning, like just for attendance. But other than that, they have no, they have no curriculum they need to do, but they use that time. Again, I think to catch up on some assignments, to do some work they have to do, but there isn't, there isn't like a set schedule other than a check-in that they have to get at. So I kind of feel like we're there already that there is that sort of fifth day for the, the students to catch up. And it's not really an instructional day. At least I haven't seen it and that's been my experience.
I agree with you, Jim. I've experienced that too. I'm just a little confused. Steve, what are you recommending to the board? You have an action item tonight and I want to know what your recommendation is before we discuss this.
Steve's recommendation, I'm sorry, Steve, I don't want to cut, jump, but I think the recommendation is the hybrid model. Is to do, have April vacation be Monday and Friday. Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday will be, will be, will be school day. So.
Say it one more time. So, so April vacation would be what?
There would be Monday and Friday would not be days. Those would be vacation days or long weekend days. And then there'd be instruction Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So wouldn't it be a week off? It would be two days off. Steve, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump in there and the.
You are doing great. But if the board wanted to do one long weekend and do four, I mean, I just feel like someday during that week would be beneficial to everybody. I do believe Monday, Friday, but as Michelle talked about M V doing, you know, on Monday, you know, I, I just think a break could be helpful. It's, it is a stretch the rest of the year, but I get it. I'm, but that was, I think I left it pretty generic on the action item, thought in consensus would, would build it, but that's where I'm at.
Andrea?
I actually have a quick question. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Charlie. We'll get to you. I will have Andrea, then I'll, I'll pull you up. Andrea?
Sure. So I, I wanted to clarify a couple of things that I'm hearing it, and correct me if I'm wrong. It sounds like at this point, though, the board is considering we are either going to do no vacation or. we are either going to do no vacation or some kind of hybrid vacation. It doesn't sound like right now anyone is really in support of taking all five days off. Um, you're all like very stone face. Yes, no?
That was, that was going to do what I was going to bring up. See if we, if we can eliminate that, the, the third option, which was no vacation.
I, I would eliminate it. Just speak for myself.
No vacation?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. Eliminate that.
Yeah, because it, I just keep seeing it coming up as a concern. And so I just want to assure people, we're not looking right at this point at us saying, we're going to take a full vacation. That's sort of off the table. So really we're looking at either a hybrid or powering through. Another option would be taking just the Monday off. Then we keep our Wednesday off for our older kids, our Friday off for our younger kids, kind of as we have been doing it. Um, so I mean, that would in a way sort of give us those two break days with us really just taking one day off. Um, and I guess the, the last thing that I would put out there, um, I'd be interested in knowing if we would be able to do some kind of combination of hours and calendar. So ending a little earlier, but not necessarily ending exactly on the 990. That's all.
Could we see those totals in the, in one of the next meetings, Steve?
So, um, for our purposes tonight, the challenge with the hours is, you know, we, we have to make a decision tonight on, on April vacation. Oh, you can't hear me? Oh, you can. Okay. Um, I was gonna say we had to make a decision tonight on April vacation. And so we can get the hours for a future conversation, maybe about end of school date. But, um, knowing the hours isn't going to help us on the April vacation. Just question that we have to solve tonight. I don't know if that helps, but. Um, Charlie, um, and then I'm gonna circle back to the board because I, I do think we should reach a decision here. So Charlie, you're up.
Sorry, I don't know quite how to raise my hand.
Well, you're doing great.
But, um, uh, just for clarification, if we were to adopt that hybrid model where Friday and Monday we would take off in that example, would that Wednesday still remain the kind of a catch up day that we have right now? Or would that change to a more traditional learning day?
Steve Allen, if you want to address that?
Um, yeah, we did talk about that in, in the, the, that Wednesday would stay, uh, as the catch up day as it is right now. We felt keeping that rhythm and reducing the amount of things we're changing week to week, it would be a Tuesday, it would be a Tuesday, Thursday with a Wednesday as the makeup.
Gotcha.
All right, so, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to see if we can move towards a consensus here. So I can see all of you, which is great for me. Um, so I guess I'm just gonna ask the question, who, by just a show of hands on the board, who would opt to just power through and not have a break, not have a vacation, no hybrid model, just do the five days of instructional learning as we currently do it? Um, raise your hand just so we can see where we're at. Okay, so a majority of us wants to do, um, Norm, I don't know what that was. So let me ask again, let me ask again. Who would want to do, you know, no break, five days, power through? Um, and, and sort of keep on, keep on trucking, so to speak. Raise your hand. Okay, so that's three. And then just so we know who, who would, who would look to do some sort of hybrid model, be it two days, one day, some, some sort of break, some. Okay, so that's three to two. So if we were just to take a vote, um, right now, that would be, that would be the, the majority would be in favor of just moving forward. Um, and so I, I guess I just want to raise the question again for anybody, for maybe the three of us or for the two of you. Um, and that's, that doesn't sound right, but I'll just say, um, do we feel, are we comfortable with that as a board? Um, or does anybody, does any board member want to, you know, I guess speak to how you feel about that. We had talked about, you know, sort of how we want to conduct ourselves as a board. Consensus was sort of our approach, but knowing that we can vote to sort of not do consensus. So I just want to ask that question before we call a vote on which way to move forward, how people feel about that, which is kind of an odd question to ask in a board that can vote to move things forward. But this is, this is sort of a question without a really strong, good answer. So I just sort of want to raise that before we move on to like a motion and a vote. But Andrea, your hand came up.
Yeah, I, I guess, um, I'm reflecting back on the fact that we just talked about our mission, which is above all care. I think the caring thing to do right now would be to give at least one day of a break. I would be in favor of doing a Monday off and then keeping the Wednesday for the older kids and the Friday for the younger kids as their catch up days. In essence, it gives them two days off, but it's still compromise of actually only taking one day off. Um, I, I personally feel like that is the caring thing to do and sort of threads the needle.
Thank you. Rob?
Yeah, I was, uh, thank you, Andrea. That's, I was gonna suggest the exact same thing. I think it's a good middle ground to get the Monday off. And now that I've got a little bit better understanding of Wednesdays and Fridays, I think that's a, a great solution to, uh, to what we've got. So I, I would support that.
Mr. Gupel?
As of right now, there is one day where students are getting able to get caught up on Fridays. Or is that just only in the elementary schools?
Elementary school is Friday, Wednesdays is for the middle high school.
So right now they're having four, four, one essentially all the schools. See, I struggle, I struggle with going, take an extra day because they have an extra day. You know, we do talk about above all care, Andrea, and I fully support that. Uh, I just, I really want to eliminate any temptation of any of our students going anywhere for social distancing. And that really, really, uh, means a lot to me where if they can get out earlier, um, and, and that also helps with, with parents. I think it's important. Um, you know, I think Jim, Jim's experienced what I'm experiencing being the teacher at home. And, you know, I definitely not making this decision based on solely, um, you know, my own experiences, but just from the community in general. You know, the community has really struggled with, with doing this, you know, with, um, teaching their kids when they're working full time, you know, as essential employees. So, uh, I, I believe there's a day to get caught up, a day to rest, a day to be able to, um, make themselves, um, you know, efficient during the week. So if they can get out early and it works for both parties, I think I would prefer us to continue that module.
Thanks, Norm. Um, so what I, what I think I saw, or at least what I, I perceived was that, um, we, we now have sort of a majority that would be in favor of, um, what I would consider powering through April vacation except for Monday. Uh, so we, we would do a four day week, that week of April vacation. Um, take, have the Monday as a vacation day for a long weekend. Um, and then, uh, do instructional time those other four days of that week. I just want to make sure I stated that right. And so I guess, uh, again, with a show of hands, if that were the proposal coming forward for a vote, um, who would be in favor of that? All right. Um, so Steve, that's a little bit of a different recommendation that I think you came in with. Um, but I, it looks like when we, and we can sit on it because we can sell, um, you know, the action items at towards the end of the meeting. Um, but it's, looks like the motion, um, would be around a four day, um, instructional week with the Monday being a vacation day for that, for that scheduled April vacation. I think I summarized that right. That's stumbling too much. Any other comments on this agenda? I know, I know a lot of people are, are listening to see what are, are, actually what we could do if, if people don't mind. Because I, there probably is most of the people here, um, as attendees are probably waiting for us to make a decision on this. And so if people don't mind and if we're ready to vote, um, we can move forward with the motion and the action item on this now so we can sort of move beyond it. Is that, are people comfortable doing that?
Would you want to hear comments from the people before we, uh?
Um.
You're, could usually.
So I'm, I'm, on this one, it's tough. I, I think we've done, um, surveys, we've done, um, a lot of calls in ourselves. We just had, I don't know how long that discussion was, but it, it went on for a while. So anyway, I, I appreciate, I appreciate, I'm just not sure it's gonna, at this point, help us make a more informed decision. Um, and so I'm more apt to sort of move on. Um, we could not do the action item now and then wait to the end of the meeting. Um, that allows for public comment. Um, again, I just feel most people are here waiting for us to make this decision. So I serve at the pleasure of you guys. And so I don't want to, I don't want to push something. But if, if someone want, if we want to move into the action item in this one now, we, we certainly can. Um, so anyway, I will look for direction. Um, I can see you all, so thumbs up. We can do the action now. All right, so, um, so the mo, I'm gonna look, um, for someone to make a motion now at the Huffington School Board to improve the superintendent's recommendation of, um, during April vacation to have the Monday off and the other days would be for instructional. Steve gave me a thumbs up, so I think I articulated that well enough. Is that, is there someone who would like to make that motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Thank you all. That was, um, I think a really good, um, discussion. So all those in favor, um, we'll have to go around. Actually, I apologize for that. We'll have to do, uh, roll calls. And so, um, we'll start with Andrea.
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob Niedau, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Fram, yes.
So Jim O'Brien is a yes. Um, so, uh, that will be our calendar for April vacation, which will be a Monday off and then four days of instructional, which will get us out near that June 5th date. But give or take, we'll probably have to get that out for the community, but it'll be earlier than otherwise.
And, um, and Jim, for the next meeting, if you want me to bring our count of where we'd be the hours, that, that'll go to that last day anyway. So I'll do that for you if you'd like.
I, yeah, I think there's strong, um, desire to see those numbers. So that I think that'd be really great.
Got it.
All right, um, I'm gonna put the agenda back up so everybody knows that we still have one and we're still, we're still trucking on through. Um, so our next item should, should be relatively quick. So, um, it's school board business, the, the board subcommittee procedures. Um, so we now have, uh, four, um, four board committees, uh, the, the finance committee, CIP committee, policy committee, and then the, um, building committee. And so I think part of this discussion was just to set some expectations for how those committees, um, would conduct themselves. Um, or yeah, that's probably the right way to say it. Um, and so the proposal I'm gonna toss out there. Um, and it's generally in keeping with how we've been doing committees, um, maybe except for the building committee, which has adopted a little different procedure, which this isn't meant to say the building committee should change the procedure at all. Uh, but for the other committees, Norm, have they operated, they, they're, they're public meetings. Um, so they are subject to 91A. Um, so the public is invited and encouraged and minutes are taken, um, and, and are made available to the public. Um, obviously with the emergency order, all the committees, um, in their meetings would be virtual, um, following, following the emergency procedures. Um, the public has a right to be part of those meetings. And so, um, there should either be a phone call or Zoom as we've been doing, these meetings should be made available so that, um, members can, um, so members of the public can, can join in. Um, and I think the real question is, do we want to record all those meetings and make the recordings available? Um, I guess my recommendation would be to not do that. Um, they should be, um, they should be conducted in accordance to 91A. Um, and minutes should be made available, um, following. Um, but the recording does add an additional administrative burden. Um, and for all these committees, uh, the recommendations will come to the full board for debate, discussion and, and a vote. Um, and so if committees, my recommendation would be if committees want to do the recording, like the building committee has, um, this isn't a prohibition against doing that. But it's sort of, what's the expectation we want to set for those committees as a board? And it feels to me like that they don't need to be recorded as long as we're following all the other guidelines of 91A. That's appropriate and we should continue, we need to continue to do that. Um, and if committees so desire to record them and put them up, I think that's fine. But I just, from my standpoint, the expectation should be that they get the work done under the provisions of 91A. Um, so I'll stop there and just get people's reaction to that and see what we think, just so we're all operating on the same, um, this, the, the same mode of operation, I guess. Any comments? Does that sound, if it sounds okay with everybody, you can give me a thumbs up and we can move on. All right, seeing no dissent. Um, so, so again, if, if, as you start doing committee work, if it is something that you want to record, go for it. Um, but the expectation will remain minutes, um, in following the guidelines of 91A. All right. So, um, next item on the, uh, agenda is a building committee update. Um, and so I'm going to turn it over to Norm. Um, but I also, I, I want to start by, um, saying thank you to Norm for stepping into the chair role, um, and really guiding the work of that committee. So Norm, thank you for doing so. Um, really appreciate it. And, uh, turn it over to you for, um, an update from your last meeting.
Uh, thanks, Jim. And, uh, it's, it's great to have Rob aboard with us too, uh, as we continue to go through this, um, project. Um, I'll be brief with my update and, uh, I have my notes here, so I'll be, uh, to the point. Uh, I'm pleased to say that BPS is officially under contract, which is great. Um, in the meeting, we discussed that the GeoTech survey, um, was completed. The, the well does have the capacity to provide fire suppression for Harold Martin. The current pump would need to be replaced in orders for, uh, in order for us to use the well, um, in the system. Um, things are on schedule, um, for the building project. Turner Group and BPS have mentioned taking advantage of the school being closed. Um, this would enable them to bring people in sooner as construction is deemed essential. Um, there is essential rules that would need to be implemented that follow per DOT guidelines, um, while working, um, during this COVID-19 and social distance, um, time. Um, BPS will be using local news outlet, outlets and will send out invites to our local contractors to bid. Gordon mentioned to contact him, um, with any recommendations for that. Um, thank you for, to Rob for bringing that to the meeting. Um, tonight, um, not to jump on the agenda, but tonight we are going to be presented with a recommendation from the building committee. The bill, the building committee has made a recommendation to the school board to spend up to 20,000 to explore a sprinkler design, uh, for Harold Martin. Ideally, we would have, uh, two options. The first option would be we would have water come from the water precinct, from the street, from the design. The other one would be we would have water come from the well, from the fire system. Um, ideally having this design and invest in 20,000, up to 20,000 really gives us a good, um, good idea what we need to do for the bid process. It gives us a great opportunity to see what we need to do, um, where we can get a, an accurate number during the process. Uh, another thing to know about this is that if this board, um, decides at this time, since this is an add-on, that's important for people to know this was not included in the bond, we have the opportunity to basically have them plug and play later on down the road if we decide to manage this in a, um, budget or a CIP plan or something, that we have the opportunity to do that. Um, this recommendation, you know, and talking to Steve, we would do as a budget transfer. Um, Jim, I think you made a good point a while ago that it doesn't make sense to bond this. Um, it would make sense to do a budget transfer if the board supports it. Um, last thing is, is that the bond rates are looking great. Um, we talked in the meeting about 15 and 20 year rates are looking fantastic. Um, that is the update. I will turn it over to Steve and Michelle if I missed anything, please.
You're getting, you're getting thumbs up by both Steve and Michelle, so good job. Norm, two thumbs up. Um, so the.
Okay, so I'm all set? Okay.
Yeah, so the question, um, is around the, the building sprinkler, whether or not the board wants to support, uh, the recommendation for the $20,000, um, for a study. Just to make sure, is that, that's the right phrasing?
Yeah, yeah, it's a study. It's up to 20,000. They said it'd be about 18.5, but it's probably, you know, we want to do 20 as a, as a buffer. Um, there'll be a design, um, that they've been in contact Turner in order to do this.[1768.54]
Any questions for Norm on that recommendation? Rob?
This, this is just a comment on that. So if the, the water is able to come in from the street, then the cost of that study would be significantly less. However, I think that the thing to consider when we're saying we would approve that is that if that money is available, then this project has got to be a go. If anybody is thinking that this is not where we want to spend money, then it doesn't really make sense to set aside $20,000 to study something that we're not, not excited about doing. So I think that's a, you know, a consideration. Is this the first thing that the board would move forward?
Well, I think it's, it's a, it's a required step. You know, we need to know what we're dealing with. And it's, it's a, it's, it is an investment that we need to be able to look at, at Harold Martin, you know, and say, what is the best opportunity in order to provide fire suppression to this school? Like I said, this is an add-on, you know, and this is something that we will get a better idea once they do the bid. They can't give us an accurate bid number, in my opinion, without having some type of design. So we need to be able to go in there and say, okay, give me your best proposal based on this design. So I would rather invest $20,000 into a design than lose something to our school that we paid eight million, nine million on.
Andrea?
Just to, just to clarify, so what I'm hearing is whether or not we choose to go ahead and put in sprinkler systems now or down the road. We're gonna need a design, any way you look at it. It sounds like what Rob is saying is that as a board, we have to decide whether we ever want to put sprinklers into Harold Martin. Seems to me like we've had pretty good feedback from the community that they would like sprinklers for our children. So I just wanted to clarify all of that.
I wasn't suggesting that whether or not we should, but whether or not we want to spend that money out of the add-ons. That's what I was saying. And I mean, I, I support the concept of the study for sure, but just, you know, let's be clear that if the monies are available and based upon what some of those first differences were between Harriman's, perhaps we'll be close. That this is, this is a high, high, high priority. In other words, our highest priority.
So I guess I'm, I, I, I might be thinking about it a little bit differently than that, Rob, but at least, I don't think we're on much different wavelengths. So like, I, I, I think putting sprinklers in Harold Martin is a top priority. And so to me, like, doing, doing the study here is sort of a no regrets. It's $20,000 to get us better engineering, better intel, better numbers. I'm not sure that we're gonna be able to put sprinklers in Harold Martin under, with the bond that we have now. I mean, we might be able to if, if numbers come in lower, if we make some adjustments, but there may be other, there may be other add-ons to the scope that fit better within that budget that we might, as a board, choose to do other, rather than the sprinkler system for, for whatever reason. Financial reasons, most likely, is, is kind of where I'm, I'm thinking. But that doesn't mean as a board member, I'm not wanting to get the sprinkler in. And we have other tools that we can deploy. It just, we're just going to make choices whether or not we're going to put building maintenance funds towards certain things, whether or not we're going to ask for different levels of appropriations in order to make that happen. But it feels without the study, none of those choices are really available to us, because we don't really know what the amount is that we need. And so, so I'm, I, I'm sort of, I agree with you totally, other than just sort of amending the, it, it may not happen in this bond, just because we might not have the financial resources to do it, but we should still make it a priority.
Thanks, and thank you.
And so the question I have for Steve, which is just around, I guess, the financing for the $20,000. So I know we, we probably could use the bond amount in order to finance that. It feels to me like using either the building maintenance trust or, you know, end of year surplus or some other source to, to fund the $20,000 seems like a more appropriate. I'm just wondering, hoping and then wondering if we have those, those resources in order to apply this to, since this is a non-budgeted item.
Yeah, Michelle and I spoke about it. There is a line item that we could transfer in for design. So we do have a line item, and yes, so Michelle would take a look and make a recommendation on where to transfer the money from into this line. And we could, so yes, we, we will, we do have the excess beyond our unreserved fund balance commitment, and so we'll take a look and bring a budget transfer forward to the board.
Thank you.
That's one quick question. Steve, the board approves this $20,000 tonight. This will still give us enough time in order for them to do the design for us to put out for bid, correct?
Yes, this beats their timeline, so it could be included in the bid package that BPS puts out. And then the budget transfer can follow, but this authorizes payment HL Turner for the, for the coordination of the design. Up to, and as Rob said, if it is, if it does come from the precinct, it would be significantly lower, it wouldn't be the 20, but we'll just keep it up to, and it would only be used for that amount.
Any other thoughts? This is an action item, so we will get the vote on, but before we leave, is there any other thoughts or questions or comments? Is everybody comfortable? All right, lots of head nodding, so that's good. All right, so Norm, thanks for that update, and thanks for all the work of the committee, and Rob too, and Michelle, and Bill, Amy, and everybody else on the call, Rebecca Christie's part of that, part of that team. So we have two, more than two items on the personnel, but a very exciting first one, which is nomination for director of student services. So I'm gonna hand it over to Steve, make that presentation.
Sure, I'll, I'll just run through. Very pleased to bring Mandy Hibbard, who is currently the directors of student services at the Colebrook School District up north. Should we had a, a, a process that included an individual interview with me, a team interview with constituencies, stakeholders, a leadership team interview, background checks, file review, and an interview with the board. Very pleased to, to bring her forward. Believe it was a, it was all remote. It was all, it was a three Zooms and an individual old-fashioned phone call from me. But it was a great process, really excited to bring that name forward, give that person forward. Everybody okay on that? Let me just keep rolling.
Yeah, and I would just, I would just say, you know, before this, before this meeting began, we, the board had a chance to speak with Mandy for about 30 minutes or so. And we're all very impressed. She, she had great answers to our questions. She has great experience, and so I think we're looking forward to having Mandy join the team. Congratulations to you, Steve, and the, and the committee that helped you do the search and do the interviews, so that's, it's not a small job to do that. So great, great, great process to find a really good candidate.
Thank you. We're bringing forward Jeff Daly as the middle high school director of school counseling. Actually, I said this when I interviewed Jeff this week. This is the first time we've hired a director of school counseling. Karine was appointed because she was there. This is the first time we had an open position. Appreciate, Chris had a lot of team process. Again, this is the Zoom world now, but it was a Zoom process. I had a chance to, to spend about an hour or just under an hour with Chris and Jeff, and lots of experience at a number of secondary schools and as a director of school counseling. So we appreciate bringing him into the school counseling team at the high school.
Any questions for Steve on this nomination?
Okay, thank you. Let me just keep going.
Please do.
Sure, up next, just as I spoke about briefly, there's the leadership team level of administration nomination tonight. That included with Mandy, that would be a full slate of administration, six, obviously return on multi-year contracts, and then Mandy would be joining that. So going through that process, and as always, as I say, I truly admire and am very privileged with the people I get to work with, both on the board and as a leadership team. So very pleased to bring that slate forward. Everybody okay? Up next, just some enrollment items. So I did include the, so Nesdeck is the firm that we use for enrollment, enrollment projections. I did include that in the packet, and Ms. Bo provides them the information. The information that we provide is updates on homeschool, when we have them, updates on private school. So that's the information that they look, they do look at births, right? They go back into the town record and they, and look at that. And so one thing in their cover, I included the cover email, if you caught it. They now expanded their kindergarten projection to 66 to 85. So that's a little bit of pullback, and, and we, Bill and I, I think Bill's on the call somewhere. I believe that's much more in the reasonable range. We do like working with Nesdeck, they do this a lot, and they did say, and it's true, kindergarten is a very difficult one to predict, because you don't have, you know, first to second, second to third, you, you don't have that. There's a lot of unknowns in the, you know, early to five. And I'll, let me just slide into updating where we are on the next enrollments. So one of the things that I appreciate what the board asked me to do over the last couple of years is to, every time we get a kindergarten registration, is to put a date next to it. So we can see where we are year by year. And I think I put it in board notes, and I don't have my notes right, but I think we're up to 45 kindergartners. And as of today, we had two registered today, believe it or not. So I think we're at 45 kindergartners. Last year, we were at 55-ish, and there were, or actually 57, there were only about six or seven that from May all the way to September joined us. So if that projection stays the same, that for, we would be looking at, and Bill and I would be pretty comfortable looking at a three kindergarten as opposed to a four kindergarten. So at some point, if you remember, we were talking, right, 85 was a projection, which would have been a fiver. We put a four in the budget, but we may be a threefer just because of where we are. So our grade three is at 67. So this is next year's grade three, if you're with me. So this is this year's grade two is at 67. That's the one we're watching pretty closely. That's a, that's a 22, 22, 23, which is, that's crowd, you know, that's, that's right at our peak, really, where we want to be. First day of school, and we do have a little bit of time. And our grade six is at 65. We're watching that one too. That's a 22, 22, 21, and that's a threefer in the budget. So we will keep those updated, but the kindergarten one, based on our, now we have enrollment history by date, looks like we're, we're definitely not in the five range, right? We're never gonna get to five, so that sleep, it's, it's either going to be a four, but probably, more probably than not, we're looking at a three. Everybody with me? Our number to convert from, we're about a 53, 54, 55, that's when we go to a four typically. That's, it's not hard fast, there's no policy, but that's our range where we look at 53, 54. Bill's pretty comfortable in that range going to four. You with me? It's very hard to read. I don't want to play poker versus Zoom, but I think I'm a little bit better in full body, but that's where we are. And I'll continue to provide updates, especially because we had two today, so it was a very timely update for the board.
Any questions for Steve on, on those numbers? No, Steve, and I know these usually go up, can we just make sure that those projections end up on the website soon? So I know, because I got a lot of questions about this from folks, and so I think having that easily accessible is probably good.
And I did, I put up, and I can put it somewhere else, but it is under support documents for this meeting on the, so people saw it today. You got it, I'll put it up. And the last piece is, I think it was two weeks ago, that we, I think the board authorized me to, to extend a reopen offer to the staff member who applied but did not get awarded, I think it was last meeting. And we did hear back that staff member has declined the offer of early retirement. So right now, we have, there is two staff members' retirement, and we are required, well, so we have three slotted in the budget, and we've given two. And that's where it can, everything now, remember, is in the board's, board's the driving seat. They can, they can clearly, like, for example, one of the things that Norm talked about, you could transfer the money from the retirement into that line for the design. I'm not saying Michelle would choose that, but that's an example, because if we didn't pull the trigger on the third retirement, there isn't money in that fund. You, you with me? So that's an example of an area where we could find it, or the board could reopen it, or the board could put it to bed, and we'll just keep moving. But right now, we have two acceptances of early retirement.
Thank you, Steve. So I, I think the question for us right now is, is which, you know, which door do we want to go through? You know, we, we discussed at the last meeting to, that we thought it was fair to offer it up to the, the next in line, for lack of a better term. And then we decided to see what the answer was there before we made sort of the decision whether or not we, we offer it further or we, we pull back. And so I think now's decision time, and which, which direction we want to go in. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts based upon the conversation two weeks ago, this new information from Steve. Any thoughts? Rob?
So, thanks, thanks, Steve, for doing that. Going back to the numbers, just so you know, I, I looked at that stuff somewhat, for some reason, in 2024, they're projecting 139 graders. But anyway, yeah, that was weird, huh? On the, on the early retirement, I think we, we've done what was right by offering it to the person who had gone through the contractual process for timing. And at this point, the process is over and closed, and we should just move forward with the two that we have.
That's generally where my head is as well.
I agree with that as well.
Any, any member have a differing opinion? All right, so no action items needed. We'll, we'll move forward and follow the process next, next time. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. All right, so next up on the agenda is a financial update from Michelle. I'm thinking, I'm hoping.
Sure, yes.
Thank you, Michelle.
So I feel like this is already old news, based on, you know, this is a snapshot in time. What I mean by that is when I did this, I went on the assumption that remote learning was only till May 4th. And there really wasn't a lot of time between when we were told we had to go remote learning to the end of March, which is when a PO would have to be looked at and adjusted to be able to have that come to fruition of what does that equate in dollars? So at the time of this financial, we were going up, part of why we were going up was I already knew that the other individual was not going to do early retirement. So we already had that individual in as a encumbrance in the payroll world, and so we got rid of that. And so that's a little bit of what is there, and obviously, based on time, you go with certain assumptions. Like, we have a couple more months left, but now courses aren't probably gonna really be taken much, but, and workshops usually are, but now they're not because of the environment we're in. So this will become more refined for the second board meeting in May as to where we are. I've already sent an email out to the office managers and to the assistants, to the directors of student services, to start working on looking at their POs. And actually, I think this was even before the governor made the announcement. Just because those, I mean, this is all a territory that we've never been in. You know, never been in a situation where, where remote, and how is that really gonna impact? Well, after the governor made his decision today, I know now that the POs can be closed for transportation for any field trips or any sporting events, because that's not gonna happen. I mean, there's lots of different things now that we'll be able to kind of quantify. And food service will start to look a little better than what is on this one. But knowing that we weren't, we're gonna really probably get any additional sales, other than the, you know, the free and reduce, which are free. But, you know, the government has kind of stepped in, and they're offering to everybody to be able to be the, you know, free model. So, and we're gonna be able to reduce even more of the POs that we have for food and try to get a handle. I mean, the big thing is that a lot of our expenses are related to salary and benefits anyways, and we've been keeping people pretty much whole. It's just those at, are not positions, but like, like a crossing guard, or, you know, like those kind of things that will actually free up that money too, because we're not gonna have that ever happen. We're not gonna have, you know, certain things. So I'm sorry that it's not as usually more like of, of a better field, but I just feel like since the governor made the announcement, I really, I really don't know now. But I can only say that it's not going to get worse, it's only going to get better.
Michelle, don't be sorry about the situation being unclear. It's definitely not your fault. But thank you for that. Questions, Andrea?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. And yeah, I mean, Sununu announced like hours ago. Yeah, I just had a quick question. And yeah, I mean, Sununu announced like hours ago, so we did not expect a whole new report. I just had a quick question. I know that some preschool refunds have been given. Are those being given automatically or based on request?
No, the superintendent had the discussion about, because people really are actually, even though they might be in session, they're actually having to take care of their child. And so that was decide, and some did ask, but really it was about being the fair and caring thing to do was that they would have to actually get childcare potentially if they were an essential worker. And how are we, it, it's a nominal fee anyways for preschool in, in the sense of things. That it was just, the feeling was that we shouldn't be charging for that.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just was wondering. Thank you.
Yeah.
Rob?
Yeah, this is a question for Steve, I think, regarding transportation and bus drivers. Any change in how we're dealing with compensation there and the relationship with first students?
We're still negotiating on a reduced amount. They have offered one and we have countered. Based on regional approaches and other contracts. So it's still in discussions.
Thank you.
Do you have an anticipated timeline, Steve, when you think that will be resolved?
I think there's an email from Michelle asking me about this today. So I will be checking in with the bus contract manager tomorrow and seeing where we're at. Sometimes he has to go up the chain.
I would imagine soon, because we have not gotten an invoice in a while. So, you know, if they're wanting to get payment because of keeping their bus drivers whole, I would think that this would be kind of a sense of urgency, I would think, but.
And there is a, a common theme of transportation companies and keeping bus drivers, actually it was, right? And so they'd be available when we came back. And, and the state law is fully extent practical. So, you know, I think I will review our contract and, and have a little bit more assertive conversation. But it was pretty collegial up to this point because we thought maybe right March fourth would be a few weeks. I'm sorry, May fourth, but now that it's the end of the year. But I did, we have a great relationship. They, they supported our drop offs, you know, on a pretty short notice. So, but I will be checking in with the contract manager tomorrow. I'll try and report out at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions for Michelle or Steve on the financials? All right. Thanks, guys. And thank you, Michelle. So we've, um, we have come to the, the tenth item in our agenda, which is the second round of public comment. And so I am going to ask those who have, are still with us and have hung on, who wish to do public comment. Again, if you go down and you click on the participants but tab at the bottom of your screen, it should give you the option to raise your hand. And if you just click on that, I can see it and I'll, I'll call on you and then unmute your line. So our first comment is Tammy. Tammy, I'm going to unmute your line. I promise I'm trying my hardest on the your line. Tammy, try to unmute your line yourself.
Oh, do I have to turn you back?
Oh, there we go.
I think I got it.
I got you. Hi, Tammy. Thank you for hanging on.
Okay, so it's still me, Tammy from sixty-two Buckingham Lane. So April vacation is going to be, your vote was Monday off, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So got lunch. That week, is that going to be needed? Or is the school still going to supply food to the children in need?
I'm going to ask Steve to, to respond as best you can, Steve.
Sure, we will have support for the free and reduce lunch. We'll be open, so we'll be running. But I know the got lunch program does a lot of supplemental work and I'll check in with Judy, who is a coordinator to see if, what she would like to, but I'll make sure. Thanks, Tammy. I'll let her know that we will be providing some support. But I know they go a little bit different menu choices for the got lunch program than we do.
Right. And, and women's club is supposed to be doing that. So that's what I needed to make sure of. Second question. And it's, it's sort of selfish, but the award night, graduation and project graduation. How are the seniors going to deal with that? I mean, I'm, I'm a, I'm part of a lot of that. So I really want to know how the senior students are dealing with it and how are we as a community going to deal with that, to help them get through it?
Tammy, that's a great question. And I don't know, I mean, I don't have an answer in.
I was looking for Steve.
Yeah, I was going to ask Steve if he had.
One of the, the spring rituals, Tammy, and I know you're very involved. I, you don't say something, you're very involved. So our awards coordination has, has, is, is full going. So there will be awards selected. There will be scholarships selected. How, we'll be talking with Chris and Rebecca and Trish, who's our coordinator. You know, how we can manage it. Is it going to be a Zoom piece? Is it, you know, so we're, and actually Andrea, Jim and I talked briefly about looking at a, a much different date for graduation. I think we'll talk about that more in the future. You know, with, with a little bit of time out, but we heard firsthand graduation is very important to kids and families. We know that. And awards are commemorative. So it's our job to be creative and to find a way to make sure we honor our families and our students. And I, I have a lot of faith in our people trying to do what's best for kids. So you're right. We've have begun those discussions about how do we make it work in this environment. But thank you.
I look forward to seeing how that works.
Me too.
Thank you, Tammy. Ella, I saw your hand up.
Yeah. Um, a student was asking me, since we'll have Monday off, if it'll be counted as like, a kind of like a snow day and then Tuesday would still be a day two? Or if Tuesday would be a day one and then it would continue on?
We'll have Chris and Mr. Kelly and Ms. Gagner on the line. They're already thinking about, we also have Memorial Day off, so they will somehow combine to make sure we even out our day ones and twos. That's, we know how critical that is. But they are, their heads are on it as we speak, because I got some texts during this about day ones and day twos, Alice. So your mind, Rebecca's telling me that Tuesday will be a day two. How's that? Does that help?
Sounds good.
All right, Charlie's figured out how to raise his hand. So I'm going to call on you, Charlie.
Yeah, I sat here and toyed around with it until I figured it out. I want to go back to the grading system and I apologize for not bringing this up then, but I just, it flew past my mind. So like Steve said, he and I had a conversation back and forth over email about just the student's perspective on the grading. And completely no disrespect meant here at all, but I've heard the opposite of what Steve was saying with, I've heard a lot of students fully supporting this pass fail system idea or something like that. And I was just wondering, I know today in Governor Sununu's letter that he put out to educators extending the distance learning, he encouraged educators to move to a system more similar to pass fail. So I was wondering that now that he has suggested that, if that'll be reconsidered by those who can make that kind of change.
I think, I think everything's on the table. I, I heard the comment as just increased greater flexibility in understanding. So Charlie, I appreciate that. And I know Mrs. LaJoy is on it with, with Rebecca and Chris. So it's a, it's an interesting challenge, but please keep providing that feedback to those three as they try and thread the needle about keeping motivation and, and doing what's best for kids. But I think your points are very well taken. And I think there's a difference between seniors and others right now in the world.
Boy, yeah, of course I, I haven't pulled a huge sample of students, but that's just what I've heard so far.
Thanks.
Steve, I have a quick question. Is there any way to kind of balance that for right now that kids aren't overwhelmed with the grading system that we can kind of just until we, until we figure this out, because this, a lot of kids probably are struggling with how this, how this approach with distant learning. Is there any way that we could somehow counter a resolution maybe? Not resolution, but something that gets them through this hump until you guys have some type of idea what you guys want to do?
Yeah, I think, I do think they're approaching this with the right, trying to get feedback and trying to, to listen to department chairs and administrative councils. So I think we're at a good place. I don't think we're oppositional or against it. I think we're just trying to figure it out. So I, I don't, I don't think there's an oppressive movement here. I think it is really trying to figure it out and, and do what's best.
All right. Before we leave public comment is, I don't see any other hands. And so I'm going to, I guess, maybe do the call once more. If anybody who's still hanging on, which is to provide public comment, now's the time to click that raise hand button. All right. So we are going to move on. I'm just going to throw the agenda back on one more time. So we have a bunch of dates coming up. And actually, the, the, the next, and they're important dates. The first one is May seventh, which is our, on the schedule, our next school board meeting. And Steve and Andrea and I discussed whether or not we want to add another board meeting on April thirtieth, which would be two weeks from tonight, if my calendar is correct. On my mind, are a couple of things, but including, and maybe especially the, the upcoming district annual meeting date of May ninth. And so I feel if we wait until May seventh to have a meeting, that feels a bit close to the May ninth date. I know there's been conversations with our moderator and I know Bo as a district is trying to put together their, their annual meeting and we want to learn from that. But it feels that we should probably get together as a board with James and kind of start to talk through some of the options that we have available to us. Because if you look at a calendar, there's not a lot of time between now and May ninth, and there's a lot of planning that we need to do. And there's a lot of planning that members of our community will need to do. So I think if, if, if board members are available to meet on the thirtieth, I think it would be wise for us to try to pull together a meeting on that date. And so this is more of a question, I don't mean to spring it on, on everybody who does, who may not have the calendars. But what I might do, so I don't have to spring the question on you now and everybody look at their calendars, is we'll probably be in touch in the next couple of days to see if people can make a meeting on the thirtieth for a couple of topics. And then if, if members can't, we'll try to find a date that works for everybody. But maybe this is more of just a question to people opposed to having a meeting during that week for us to kind of do some of this planning. If you don't want to, just shake your head no. I see no shaking your heads. I see Andrea giving me a grumpy stare, but that's okay. So we'll, we'll plan on that. We'll see, we'll try for the thirtieth. If that doesn't work, we'll, we'll find a, a date that accommodates all five of us. I, I know no one's going anywhere, so we'll, we'll be all right. All right.
Has it, Jim? Has, has there been an update from James at all regarding there?
So I know James has been thinking about options and I, and I know that the, what Bo is trying to do, and I'm not going to do, try to explain what Bo is trying to do. I know there was an article paper the other day. It's, it's a pretty complicated process that they're, they're trying to put together. And I think one of James's thoughts was to see how that works and then kind of learn from how, what works well and what doesn't in the dust. That was, Bo's meeting was supposed to happen this week and it got postponed the next week. And so it, it feels like we got to get moving and not sort of wait for that experiment to happen. So that doesn't really answer your question, Norm, but I think that's.
No, my other question is, is though, my other question for you though, is if we're planning for the annual meeting, does the past board have to be part of that plan processes? They said they, they were part of it.
Yeah. So I think what I, what I'm trying to do is pulling together a meeting with like Steve, myself and Liz and James and Andrea to try to, to talk, put, put some options on the table and then present hopefully some ideas for this board to consider on the thirtieth. And my assumption is the, the other members of the previous court would be involved in that conversation as well. So we can all get into agreement on what's happening for.
Thank you, Jim.
Oh, you're welcome. All right. So we have a number of action items that we'll take. And then there is a need for a non-public session. And so what we'll do is for the, for the board members is at the conclusion of this meeting, we'll vote to go into non-public session. And then we will, we will then cancel this line, because this is a public line. And I will email you all a, a separate. Sorry, my brain spacing. I was going to send you a separate link, sort of what we did for our non-public session earlier today that we can use to go into non-public session on, it'll be a non-public line. It'll have a password that only we can access, that we will use for our non-public session, if that's, if that's cool for everybody. All right. So let's see, we have done action item number thirteen, so we'll move past that. And so I look for a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the building committee's recommendation to approve the funding for a Harold Martin school sprinkler design of not more than twenty thousand dollars to H L Turner.
So moved.
There's a second. All right. So the motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Kupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Cream, yes.
And Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes. So the vote is four to nothing. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's nomination of Mandy Hibbert, Director of Student Services for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year pending final approval of the superintendent?
I move for that motion.
There a second? Is there any discussion?
Steve, you hired a fantastic candidate and I want to thank you for a, a really good research in your team. Thank you very much.
Any other, any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Kupel, yes.
Seth? Seth?
Seth A. Cream, yes.
Perfect. Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea, do you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought I saw you raising.
I know, I did. I put it down.
All right. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's nomination of Jeff Daley, H M H S Director of School Counseling pending final approval of the superintendent?
Jim, I don't think you did the, finished the last one, did you?
I believe I did. Oh, I didn't vote. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. So we got to get, get the whole motion done.
It, it's actually fine. We'll move on. We'll move on. My vote, my vote, it has already passed with a four zero vote. So I think.
Okay, okay.
So is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's nomination of Jeff Daley, H M H S Director of School Counseling pending final approval of the superintendent?
I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So we'll start with Rob.
Rob Nato, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Cream, yes.
Norm?
Norm Kupel, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes. I remembered to vote that time. Thank you, Norm. Well, that vote passed on a five zero vote. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's nomination of the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one Hopkinton School District Administrative Slate as presented?
So move.
Make that motion. For crimes. Second.
Perfect. There we go. Motion is made and has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Norm?
Norm Kupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Cream, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, enthusiastic, yes.
And Jim O'Brien votes yes. All right. Thank you all for your patience and flexibility as we move through those votes. And so now I would look for a motion, excuse me, to go into non-public session for the discussion of matters per RSA ninety-one, A three, two. Small B and C for matters of personnel and student issue. So it would, yeah, I think that's right, B and C.
Move to go into a non-public session.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
There we go. Perfect. And so so we're going to do the roll call again. So Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Seth?
They affirm yes.
Norm?
Norm Kupel, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Jim O'Brien is yes. So. So we will go into non-public session. And for the public, there won't be any matters discussed following the non-public session, except for a motion to potentially seal the minutes and then a motion to adjourn. And so those will be the only public motion made. There won't be any other business conducted. And so with that, I'm going to end this meeting and then. In about a minute, just look for board members and and Steve, just look on your emails and there'll be a link to a to another Zoom. I want to call these rooms because they're not rooms, but another Zoom meeting. So I appreciate it. Appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.